January 11th, North Attleboro Town Council meeting.
I'm going to say where I am.
Let me just, we might have to, Betty, is it possible for you to mute your phone? It looks so we got you muted. Okay, we're good. We're good. So again, welcome to tonight, January 11th Town Council meeting. Please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. As a preliminary matter, this is Keith LePointe. I'm the President of the North Attleboro Town Council. Please permit me to confirm that all members and persons anticipated in the agenda are present and can hear me. Members of the Town Council, when I call you, please respond in the affirmative if you could hear me. Mr. Shanahan. Shanahan, give me the thumbs up. I'll take it as a yes.
Yes, I can hear you.
Excellent, and we can hear you as well. Ms. Prescott does not appear to be on quite yet. We'll keep an eye on that, but no Ms. Prescott. Mr. Gregory.
Affirmative.
Thank you, Mr. Gregory. Ms. Voice.
Yes.
Thank you, Ms. Voice. Mr. Simmons.
Present.
Thank you, Mr. Simmons. Ms. Kathcart. Thank you, Ms. Kathcart. Mr. Lennox.
Present.
Mr. Lennox. Mr. Parry.
Present.
Thank you, Mr. Parry. Now let me turn to members of the staff, Town Manager Board.
Present.
Mr. Hollowell.
Present.
Mr. Sweet.
Present.
Ms. Billinkoff.
Present.
It looks like we have Ms. Hunt as well.
Present.
Thank you very much. I think that is everybody. Am I missing anyone, Mr. Borg?
That is everyone, sir.
Excellent. We have a caller three that just joined. If he just joined, can you identify yourself?
Hi, my name is Ernest Grenier. Live on McEwen Drive.
All right, very good. Thank you, Mr. Grenier. We're just doing a roll call here. Sorry to catch you off guard. Okay, so moving forward. Good evening, everyone. This is the January 11th Open Meeting of the North Attleboro Town Council. It's being conducted remotely, consistent with Governor Baker's executive order of March 12th, 2020, due to the current state of emergency in the Commonwealth through the outbreak of the COVID-19 virus. In order to mitigate the transmission of the COVID-19 virus, we've been advised and directed by the Commonwealth to suspend public gatherings. And as such, the Governor's order suspends the requirement of open meeting law to have all meetings in a publicly accessible physical location. Further, all members of public bodies are allowed in parts to participate remotely. The order, which you can find posted with the agenda materials for this meeting, allows public bodies to meet entirely remotely, so long as reasonable public access is afforded, so that the public can follow along with the deliberations of the meeting. Ensuring public access does not ensure public participation, however, per the North Attleboro Town Charter, this meeting will include an opportunity for the public to address the council. We are convening via go-to meeting, and information has been posted on the town's website on how the public can dial into the meeting. Please note that this meeting is being recorded and that attendees are participating by video conference. Accordingly, please be aware that other folks may be able to see you. Take care not to share your computer screen. Anything that you broadcast may be captured by the recording. All supporting materials that have been provided, members of this body, are available on the town's website unless otherwise noted. The public is encouraged to follow along using the posted agenda unless I know otherwise. I will be taking a few things out of order on the agenda, just to try to manage people's time, but I will flag that as we go. A few ground rules. I, the Chair, President of the Town Council, will introduce each speaker on the agenda. After they conclude their remarks, I will go through the other members. We'll do what we've been doing all along. It's worked really well. Just signal me with your hand, and I'm happy to call. Please remember to mute your phone or computer when you're not speaking, and please remember to speak clearly in a way that helps generate accurate minutes. And for any response, please wait till I yield the floor to you. Once we get to the section on public comments, what I'll do is take an inventory of anybody on the, on the line, and then I will yield time to each member of the public who wishes to address the council. And then finally, each vote that we take will be conducted via roll call vote per the open meeting law. And with that, let's, let's turn to the full agenda. We have, we have had the Pledge of Allegiance, and what I would like to do is just start off with a moment of silence. You may have noticed that the flags are flying at half-mast in recognition of the officer who lost his life in Washington DC last week. And let's just observe a moment of silence. Thank you. Okay, now, let's turn our attention to Mrs. Poirier. Poirier, I believe, is on the phone, calling in live from the Mad Moose. What I'd like to do is actually just offer a few comments, and then I'd like to open it up for Mrs. Poirier to make her remarks. Mrs. Poirier, there should be a certificate somewhere there at the Mad Moose for you. Can you just let me know if you have that?
Oh, nice. I don't have it yet, but I'm sure I will.
Okay, maybe give Seal a wave. She has it and is going to present it to you. But while, while we're waiting, I just have a few things I want to say. Very few people in the history of North Attleboro have given more of themselves than you have. Your dedication to seniors and the children.
I'm trying to flag Seal down. Hold on one second.
Okay, I'll hold, I'll hold.
Okay, she's going to get it right now.
Okay, great. I'll keep going, Betty, while we wait for her.
Okay.
Okay. Betty, your dedication to the seniors and the children, and anyone who really can't fight for themselves, or who hasn't had a voice for themselves, is uncrushable and really, really stands for your character. I personally have had the privilege of, on two occasions, of going to the State House with you for different things in North Attleboro. And a couple of things really speak to me. One is, when you're walking through the halls of the State House, it's just so impressive how the Governor, A, and members of both parties will immediately cross the room to say hello to you, find out what's going on. But you know what really speaks more to me about your character, Mrs. Poirier, is that in addition to them, every other person in that building, every security guard, every receptionist, every janitor, will go out of their way to say hello to you. I've never seen anything like it. Every person in that building adores you, and I think that that is such a testament to what you are as a person. I think the people of North Attleboro, I hope, understand all that you've given, but it's just so inspiring to see how you carry yourself as our representative in that building.
You are, you are so kind.
Yeah, you are the kind one. The council has drawn up a citation for you. I hope you have it. I'm going to read it for the public. "The North Attleboro Town Council in recognition of honorable service, this certificate of recognition is being conveyed to Elizabeth A. Poirier. Upon the occasion of your retirement as state representative for the 14th Crystal District, and specifically the town of North Attleboro, this certificate of recognition is issued to you, Elizabeth Poirier, as acknowledgement of your 23 years as our state representative and a lifetime of service to the citizens of North Attleboro. On this day, January 11th, 2021, the North Attleboro Town Council, on behalf of its townpeople, hereby expresses gratitude to State Representative Elizabeth Poirier for the many contributions too numerous to list, and thanks you for your years of dedication, and further wishes you good health, happiness, and continued success in your retirement." And with that, a little virtual round of applause for you, Mrs. Poirier. Career, and second to none.
Thank you so much. That was just lovely. Is it my turn to speak now?
It is your turn, Mrs. Poirier.
Okay, thank you. That was very kind, and believe me, I appreciate it. I have spent a lot of time in the State House, and as you just explained to everyone, it's kind of like, it becomes like a second family. So all of the people that work there, the security guards, the court officers, all of the members, and all of the different people that help the building work, become like another family. And quite frankly, if we don't work together and we don't get along, then nothing works. And that's how it is with you at Town Council and Town Hall. I know the same kind of relationships exist for you all, too. It has been my extreme honor and privilege to serve the people of this district, the whole complete town of North Attleboro, part of Attleboro, and part of Mansfield. I have come to meet and know so many people in the issues that are prominent in our communities, and I would like to think that I've been able to make a difference in hope in whatever small way I've been able to. It's been a privilege to serve, especially during this particular term, because there were so many people in dire need of help during this pandemic, whether it was unemployment, issues with other state agencies that they weren't able to get to, so many issues. It has been very difficult, but we've been able to do the best we can for the people that live in the area. I also was very fortunate to have two wonderful women who worked for me for a number of years, who were very adept at being able to get through to different ones that we needed in order to help the people that called. So it's been my honor and my privilege to serve, and I really thank you all very much for recognizing me with this beautiful certificate that I have in front of me, as I'm enjoying a lovely dinner at one of our local restaurants, the Mad Moose. And I urge everyone who's listening to patronize our local restaurants, especially during this pandemic time, when they really need the support. So thank you all so much for this opportunity. I really appreciate it.
Thank you, Betty. And we're so glad to have you with us tonight. What I would like to do is take the agenda a little bit out of order here. I'm going to go ahead and turn to Town Councilor Community Announcements. That way, if there's anybody who wishes to say anything, and while Mrs. Poirier is on the line or otherwise, we're going to go to Town Councilor Community Announcements. At this point, you want to hang on for just another couple of minutes?
Sure.
Okay, we will go through the order. Mr. Shanahan, you're first.
I have nothing at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Shanahan. Ms. Prescott, you have not joined. I'm just confirming, correct?
No, I'm here.
I see you, okay.
I'm so sorry. We were doing math homework. I was so ready for tonight's meeting. We had dinner done by 6 o'clock and math homework, so I had to get that done. But I just wanted to thank Ms. Poirier for her service to the town and wish her the best in the upcoming years.
Great. Thank you, Ms. Prescott.
Thank you.
Mr. Gregory.
I would echo those sentiments as well. Thank you, Ms. Poirier, for all your contributions. Continue to live well, live long, and live a life of great purpose. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Voice.
Yes, I want to say thank you to Betty Poirier for her, for her public service here for our community. Thank you, Betty.
Thank you.
Mr. Simmons.
Representative Poirier, John Simmons here. I think you know how I feel about you. I want to thank you publicly for everything you've done for North Attleboro. I think you are an incredibly giving person, and I hope everybody realizes how much of yourself you have given to this community, and I thank you very much for that.
Thank you, John.
Ms. Kathcart.
Thank you. As Betty knows, we've been friends for many, many, many years, and I've had the privilege of working alongside her with several different things over the years in the town. I have known Betty to be, one, someone with the biggest heart that I've ever met. She is so kind and giving, and works tirelessly on anything and everything that she's ever done. She's not going to go away. She's still going to be in town. She's still on the Dana Board, and I'm sure a couple of other things, and we will continue to see her efforts and her hard work produce in other areas. I love you, Betty, and I wish I was there at the Mad Moose with you instead of sitting here in my living room.
Thanks, Joanne.
Okay, take care.
Mr. Lennox.
Betty, just, it's hard even, even putting thanks into words. You've done so much. You and Kevin have done so much for this whole area. There, there wasn't one single time that I didn't reach out to you, even, even before I was a member of, of any municipal board, that, that you didn't take the time to listen. And then, and then even, even after, when I was a member of the board, you were, you were there to hear every, every issue and, and wanted to know if there was something that you could do to help the, the people that, that gravitated to you. They, they loved you so much because you've spent so much time doing so many wonderful things for the community. The acts of charity, the giving to the pantry, the, the, all the small things that none of us will ever know about because folks reached out to you and you were able to help them means so much to this community. From the bottom of my heart, and, and my wife as well, thank you so very much for doing everything that you did for our town. So thank you.
Oh, Mike, thank you so much.
Mr. Parry.
Yeah, obviously, I'll echo the sentiments of my fellow counselors. Mrs. Poirier, thank you so much for your many, many years of service and commitment to our town. You know, we really very much appreciate it. We owe you a debt of gratitude. And I want to just, I'll flash this for the camera. It's a picture of me and Patrick Sullivan getting sworn in by Mr. Poirier into the Selecting Board, and I got this in the mail from Betty in her office, I think, you know, three or four days after I initially was elected as a selectman, and I still have it up here in my office, and that meant a lot to me that day. It still does. So again, thanks for, for all your many years of service, and I hope that we'll, we'll see you around, and you'll continue to be an active member of our community, particularly in all the charity work that you do for us. So thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, everyone. You know, for my sake, Mrs. Poirier, just a one sort of closing thought, and for better or worse, I don't know, this is a little bit of a bias I have, but I do absolutely judge people by their children. I know that's maybe not fair enough, but, but your kids are exceptional, and I think that that is a, is a tribute to me and Kevin as well. So, you know, thank you for your contributions to the town and to the families and, and to the state. We just really, really appreciate you.
It was, it was so kind of all of you to recognize me in this way, and to tell you how much I appreciate it is beyond my ability to express tonight, but my heart is in our community, as I know all of you, and your service is so important to the people of our community. So I encourage you to continue your public service, and you are caring about everyone who's here. And I can't thank you enough for this recognition. It means a great deal to me. And don't forget to support your local restaurants. They need you now more than ever, as well as all the other small businesses. So, thank you, thank you. I wish you were out here so we could raise a glass together at the Mad Moose, but maybe a night in the future, we will do that. Thank you all so much, and continue your good work.
Great, thank you. Enjoy your meal.
Thank you.
Mrs. Poirier, are you working for the local businesses right up until the end? So we'll move on. I actually had a couple of other just quick community announcements. Mr. Poirier, I wasn't sure if you were going to cover this one. Did want to express my condolences for the retired firefighter, Mr. Hickman and Mr. Farrar, who recently passed away. Also, on that same vein, I usually do this because unfortunately, our community loses, you know, loses people every day sadly, but I did have a classmate in North Attleboro High School, class of 1993, who died way too young this weekend after a long battle with cancer. Darrell Moody might have been one of the most loved members of that class of 1993. Really, really sad to see him leave too early. So just wanted to pass on my condolences there for his family. And apologies for doing that. I usually don't, but he's a special one for sure. All right, well, let's, let's get going, continuing with the agenda. I'm going to take a few more things out of order, if we could, just to respect people's time. First, I'd like to go into new business. Measure 2021-026, the confirmation of the appointment of Gregory Lawrence to the Planning Board. Mr. Borg, can I let you just give us the cover of that?
Council President, Council Members, thank you. I had the opportunity to interview Mr. Lawrence in the previous few days to discuss an opening on the Planning Board. We had some great discussion points about, you know, what's important in town, where we think, you know, improvements could be made, different ideas, role of the Planning Board. I found Mr. Lawrence's answers all to be well-informed and astute and on a point for the Planning Board. It's my recommendation that the Town Council approve Mr. Lawrence's appointment to the Planning Board for a term of three months, and that is because he is filling Mr. Shanahan's position, who is now an esteemed member of the Town Council. His vacancy and his term was set to expire in the end of March of this year. And then, so at the end of this term, if Mr. Lawrence would like to reapply, we would take that under consideration, if approved by this body this evening. He's here tonight and can answer any of your questions.
Very good. Mr. Lawrence, would you like to say anything? Otherwise, I'll open it to the council to ask if they have any questions.
I don't have anything to add.
Okay, great, thank you. Anyone in the council have anything they'd like to say or ask? All right, I don't see anything, so I'll go ahead and take a motion then.
I move to confirm the appointment of Gregory Lawrence to the Planning Board, term to expire March 31st, 2021.
Second.
A motion from Mr. Parry, a second from Ms. Kathcart. Any further discussion? Mr. Lawrence, I'll just, I'll just offer a hearty thank you on behalf of the council for agreeing to step up and fill the vacancy. You know, with the, the change in, in town government, it's still so important to have people volunteering for these really important boards, and the Planning Boards, one of those, particularly that has a huge impact. So appreciate you filling that for the, the remainder of the term.
Thank you. I appreciate the opportunity.
Excellent. Any other discussion? Otherwise, I'll take it to a vote. It's seen none. This is a roll call vote. Mr. Shanahan.
I'm actually going to abstain.
Okay, Mr. Shanahan abstains. Ms. Prescott?
Yes.
Prescott's a yes. Mr. Gregory?
Yes.
Mr. Gregory's a yes. Ms. Voice?
Yes.
Ms. Voice is a yes. Mr. Simmons?
Yes.
Mr. Simmons is a yes. Ms. Kathcart? I heard you were moving, Ms. Kathcart, but I didn't hear the words.
Yes.
Yes, okay. Ms. Kathcart is a yes. Mr. Lennox?
Yes.
Mr. Lennox is a yes. Mr. Parry?
Yes.
Parry's a yes. I keep appointing him a yes, so that's 801 with Mr. Shanahan abstaining, approving the appointment of Mr. Lawrence to the Planning Board. Thank you again, Mr. Lawrence, and I'm sure we'll see you soon.
Thank you very much.
Very good. Moving on to Measure 2021-027, confirmation of appointment of Sue Rodriguez Calista to the Retirement Board. Mr. Borg?
Council President, Council Members, we had an opportunity to appoint a member to the Retirement Board based on a vacancy, where a previous member was unable to comply with all the requirements to serve, and thus creating this vacancy. I was approached by Sue Rodriguez Calista, who works in our HR department, and she and I discussed this position, and I found her to be more than common. She does deal with a lot of our retirement issues already from the HR perspective, and I believe that her filling this position would be appropriate and provide us great representation on this board. I don't know if she's on the phone. I don't see, unless it's the resident that has the phone as resident. Nope. So I don't see her, but I did interview her and find that, you know, she was more than qualified to fill this position, and I would submit her name for confirmation to you.
Thank you. Any questions from the council? Mr. Borg, just, you know, this board is a little bit unique. Just confirming her as an employee of the town, being an appropriate appointee, and her residence is North Attleboro, I assume?
No, there's no residency requirements for this particular board. So she is an employee of the town and meets all the requirements, and we did confirm that prior to making this appointment.
Good. Mr. Parry?
Keith, good question, Mr. LePointe. What, what does the Retirement Board do, Mr. Borg? What's their, what's their primary function? Do you keep, Mr. LePointe?
So, Council President, through you, Mr. Parry, the Retirement Board considers all the different retirement cases and, and issues that come before them regarding, I can't speak to the exact details of their daily duties and requirements, but this Sue Calista and I did talk about the retirement system and different responsibilities concerned with that particular board, and felt that she met all the requirements. And I wish she was here because she did some preliminary work and investigation on that. So it, I can't tell you the exact duties right now, but I will follow back up with you, sir, and provide that to you this evening.
All right, thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Parry. Anyone else? All right, I will take a motion then.
I'll move to confirm the appointment of Susan Rodriguez Calista as a member of the Retirement Board for a three-year term set to expire on March 31st, 2024.
Motion for Mr. Parry, a second from Ms. Kathcart. Any further discussion? It's seen none. I'll go ahead and take it to a roll call vote. Mr. Shanahan?
Yes.
Shanahan's a yes. Ms. Prescott?
Yes.
Prescott's a yes. Mr. Gregory?
Yes.
Mr. Gregory's a yes. Ms. Voice?
Yes.
Ms. Voice is a yes. Mr. Simmons?
Yes.
Mr. Simmons is a yes. Ms. Kathcart?
Yes.
Ms. Kathcart's a yes. Mr. Lennox?
Yes.
Mr. Lennox is a yes. Mr. Parry?
Yes.
Mr. Parry's a yes. I keep appointing him a yes, so that's 90, confirming the appointment of Ms. Calista to the Retirement Board. Are we good there, Mr. Borg? Okay, let's come back up, just cognizant of the fact that we've got at least one community member on the line here. So before we do the minutes, I'm going to go ahead and take resident and community comment. I'm jumping all over. Hope it's okay there, everybody. Resident community comment. Is there anybody from the public that would like to address the council?
Hello, this is Pam Hunt. I am not a resident, but, so I don't know. I came tonight because I wanted to speak on behalf of Betty Poirier. So, is, is this okay?
Yeah, yeah, I'll take you. Let me just take your name, Mrs. Hunt. We'll include you here, but let me give, just give me a second to see if there's anyone else that wants to address as well, and then, then I'll yield to you. Okay, is there anyone else? I do know, Mr. Grenier, you are on the line, I think, but you don't have to speak. I just want to make sure that you're heard that you do.
No questions.
Okay, very good. Since, it sounds like we just have Ms. Hunt. I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you very much. I'm sorry, but I thought I was going to get the opportunity to say that you were pretending. to say something while you were pretending Betty was her comments and everything. And I just wanted to say that as senior senate director of the town, Betty has been incredibly receptive to whatever we do. She has always been there for us. And I don't know if people know this, but several years ago, I nominated her to be the state rep of the year for Mass Council on Aging, and she received that award. She deserved it. And I also want to tell people that other eight towns and cities say, how do you get in touch with your state rep? And how do you stay connected with her or him? And I say, I just want her to say, Betty, can you support this? And she texts me back and said, absolutely. It's that simple. So she has done an incredible job. And I have worked in, I worked in Rhode Island, and I worked very closely with the state reps in Rhode Island for 12 years. And I've worked for almost 17 years in Mass. And I have to tell you that Betty Poirier is the best state rep that I have ever, ever worked with in all my years. And I appreciate everything she's done for everybody. And we want to have something for her. And she asked us to wait until COVID was over so we could do a regular type of thing where people could come and see her in person. So that's what we're planning to do. So I appreciate that the Town Council and the town manager recognize her, because she definitely deserves all the recognition that we could give her. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Pam. And apologies for not including you while Betty was still on the phone. We'll make sure that she hears the message. And I hope you'll invite the council to whatever it is you're planning post-COVID.
Thank you, Keith.
Thank you, Pam.
Okay, so just one last check. Is there anybody else left from the community that wants to address the council? Okay, we're going to keep going then. All right, let's see if we can go through the rest of the agenda in order. Approval of the minutes, approval of the Town Council minutes from December 8. Before we take the motion, I do want to propose one amendment. Mr. Lennox called out to me. Our rules actually call for regular town meetings on the second and fourth Mondays of the month. And sort of by definition, if we hold a meeting at an alternative time, it's a special meeting of the Town Council. So what I would like to propose is that in the title of that, of those meeting minutes, that it is called out as a special, a Town Council special meeting. So if we could, I would love to take a motion to approve those minutes with that amendment, if we could, Mr. Parry.
Mr. President, so the December 8 was a special meeting?
It was, yeah.
14th was the special?
No, the eighth. The eighth was Tuesday, the eighth, yeah.
Okay, thank you. Move to approve the Town Council meeting minutes for the special town meeting held on, the special council meeting held on December 8, 2020.
Second.
Motion for Mr. Parry, a second for Ms. Cathcart. Any discussion? Seeing none, I'll take it to a roll call vote. Mr. Shanahan?
I'm staying. I wasn't present.
Very good. Ms. Prescott?
Yes.
Ms. Prescott's a yes. Just for clarity, Mr. Shanahan's an abstention. Mr. Gregory?
Yes.
Gregory votes yes. Ms. Boyce?
Yes.
Okay, Ms. Boyce is a yes. Mr. Simmons?
Yes.
Mr. Simmons is a yes. Ms. Cathcart?
Yes.
Ms. Cathcart's a yes. Mr. Lennox?
Yes.
Lennox, a yes. Mr. Parry?
Yes.
Parry's a yes. I keep a point of a yes. So that's 801 with Mr. Shanahan abstaining. Approval of the Town Council minutes of December 14, 2020.
Move to approve the Town Council meeting minutes of December 14, 2020.
Second.
Mr. President?
Yep, Ms. Cathcart, go ahead.
We need to make an amendment to that. There's a scribness error on, I think it's page three, where we vote to go into executive session. Maybe it's not three. This is a big one. It's on page eight, where the roll call, my name isn't on there. Mrs. Prescott is on there twice. And I know she didn't vote twice.
Very good catch.
We need, okay. So I'm sure it's a scribness error, but we need to amend it to have, to read my name in there along with the rest of the councilors, if you don't mind.
No, very good. So let's take it as amended. Mr. Parry, you want to just update your motion?
Yeah, I'll amend my motion to reflect the changes aligned by Council Cathcart's roll call, being swapped out for Council Prescott.
Are you talking about the December 14 meeting?
Yes.
The December 14, not the executive session, but?
Yes.
Okay.
The vote to go into executive session.
Ah, all right.
Who seconded that original motion? I'm sorry. Is it, do you remember?
I have seconded.
Mr. Lennox?
Actually, if you look, if you look on a couple of spots, Council Prescott is in there.
Yes.
That's what I'm talking about, Mr. Lennox.
Yeah, exactly. Every vote. It's not just the executive session.
Yeah, it's actually, it's actually all the votes.
Let's do this. So, let's do this, just for the sake of time here. First of all, I can see your face. Not a big deal. I think this was your first set of meeting minutes, but not a big deal. If we could, let's table this. And Ms. Billinkoff, you could just fix that, and we will vote these again in two weeks. Is that okay with everybody?
Yeah.
I want to withdraw the motion.
Yeah, yeah.
Oh, no, it's okay.
Let me get a withdrawal of the motion.
I will withdraw my motion.
Can I withdraw the second? I think, Mr. Shanahan, you seconded the original motion, right?
Yeah, do I have to withdraw a second? Yes. All right, I do that. I withdraw my second.
Okay, good. We are officially withdrawn. Riveting television, I'm sure here. Okay, so we'll pick that back up in a couple of weeks. Let me get back into the agenda here. All right, we've got another one that's not exactly smooth here. So item C, a vote to release the Town Council executive session minutes of December 14. I sent all of you an amended version of that about an hour ago, hour and change ago. The original version that you had included details of the October meeting. Now, if you recall, what we did on December 14, the only purpose of that executive session was to approve our minute of October 26. So it's important that those December meetings only say that, that they say that we voted to approve the meeting minutes from October, and then those meetings were deemed approved in the meeting. So we already are sitting here today with approved executive session minutes from December 14. And that's the version that I sent you about an hour and a half ago. What we have to vote now tonight is to release those amended, those amended minutes. So then the public has access to the minutes of our meeting from December 14, which is, again, the minutes that I shared with you about two hours ago, or not, I'm sorry, an hour ago. If there's any questions at all about that, I'll kick this to our next meeting. But if you all are comfortable, I'd love to just get it out of the way and hold it. So let me just see. Are there any questions? Is anybody confused about what we need to do here? I don't see any. I'll go ahead and take a motion then.
I move to release the Town Council executive session minutes of December 14, 2020.
Second.
Have a motion for Mr. Parry, a second for Ms. Cathcart. Any discussion? This is a roll call vote. Mr. Shanahan?
Yes.
Mr. Shanahan votes yes. Ms. Prescott?
Yes.
Ms. Prescott votes yes. Mr. Gregory?
Yes.
Mr. Gregory votes yes. Ms. Boyce?
Yes.
Ms. Boyce votes yes. Mr. Simmons? Say it again, Mr. Simmons?
Yes.
Yes, Mr. Simmons votes yes. Ms. Cathcart?
Yes.
Cathcart votes yes. Mr. Lennox?
Yes.
Lennox votes yes. Mr. Parry?
Yes.
Parry votes yes. I keep a point vote yes. That's 90, releasing the executive session minutes of December 14. One more, approval of the Town Council minutes from January 4, 2021. Motion?
I move to approve the Town Council meeting minutes of January 4, 2021.
Second.
A motion for Mr. Parry, a second for Ms. Cathcart. Any discussion? Ms. Cathcart?
Yep.
Another scribness error, unfortunately, but it's okay. Page three, the paragraph about low-income housing, SERPEDD, S-E, I mean, excuse me, S-R-P-E-D-D.
Yeah.
Southeastern Regional Planning and Economic Development District. So we just need to have that read, S-R-P-E-D-D.
Excellent. Okay, let's just take a quick amended motion, Mr. Parry.
I move to amend the motion to the correct acronym for SERPED.
A second, Ms. Cathcart? All right, motion a second. Any other discussion?
Yep.
Okay, good. Roll call vote. Mr. Shanahan?
Yes.
Shanahan votes yes. Ms. Prescott?
Yes.
Ms. Prescott votes yes. Mr. Gregory?
Yes.
Mr. Gregory votes yes. Ms. Boyce?
I abstained.
Ms. Boyce abstains. Mr. Simmons?
Yes.
Mr. Simmons votes yes. Ms. Cathcart?
Yes.
Ms. Cathcart votes yes. Mr. Lennox?
Yes.
Lennox votes yes. Mr. Parry?
Yes.
Parry votes yes. I keep a point vote yes. That's 801 with Ms. Boyce abstaining. And, you know, just quickly, you know, apologies to the public. Sometimes these meetings, you have just administrative stuff that we have to take care of. And I will say, you know, one of the consequences, being able to meet remotely during COVID has been a huge advantage to us. But one of the consequences is the need for roll call votes, which definitely slow us down. So apologies to those of you in the public that may be trying to listen or watch on television. And I appreciate that it makes these meetings a little clunky sometimes. Let's keep going. Town manager report.
Council President, Council Members, good evening. Thank you. It's been almost a month since we've had a town manager report. So I'll have just a couple more items I'll talk about. We'll start off with COVID. Since it's been almost 30 days since we've had a town manager report, our current number is in the community is 1,590 cases. This is an increase of 528 cases since my last report to you on the 14th of December. Our current active cases in town is at 100. And infectious rate right now, this week, got it from Ann Marie Fleming this morning, is at 9.02%, 9.02% in the positive. That puts us in the red as a community. The governor did announce an extension of the limitations on capacity that would remain in effect through the 24th of January. And we are complying with that. Some other notes, that we are working in a partnership as the vaccination is now becoming available to the community in a very limited way. The first rollout is to public, or correct me, to first responders. We did put in a request for 200 vaccination doses for North Attleboro, Plainville, and Seekonk in a utilization effort, as we did not have enough numbers on our own. So we reached out to other communities and put this together. We did receive 100 vaccinations. Vaccinations have already started. We had 20 individuals vaccinated last week, and the remainder will be vaccinated this week. So we are starting to see the vaccination. This is the Moderna vaccination that we received on this first round. Just a couple of updates under emergency management. We did receive a grant from the Community Emergency Response Team, SERC, in the amount of $3,500 to help us procure items for emergency disaster response. We plan on spending these funds for cots and blankets, which we currently do not have. And Fire Department Chief Coleman, as our emergency management manager, will be handling that. Also, with the Fire Department, they did apply for, and were granted, a FEMA and assistance to firefighters grant in the amount of $54,000. 10% of that came from operational funds. It was a 10% match from the local community. But we do now have brand-new thermal cameras that will greatly assist our fire department in all of their activities. Under Communications, I did complete a recent segment of the Town Managers Report with Peter Gay. I believe that's airing now. And I also will appear tomorrow on the Concerned Citizens Forum and tape that event with Mr. Dick Celtica. And on the Concerned Citizens Forum, it's become a very good outlet where I respond to questions that were submitted to Mr. Celtica about concerns in the community. Operational updates, we did have, after the last Town Council meeting, we did have a winter storm, approximately 10 inches. Good news is, that went very well. No significant snow in the next two weeks in the forecast. We did work on our Office 365 rollout. That's underway. A lot of good tools. Just want to say thanks to the IT Department, Keith Mueller, and his team up there for everything they've done so far. So good on that and doing well. And they're reacting to any issues that do come up. And if you're still, as the council members, as we did convert that email, if you're having any issues, please let us know so we can work on that. And I think this will become a topic later in the agenda items. The Open Space Survey, you saw that we are complete with that. We had a tremendous response to that. Around 950 residents responded to that. We've taken the initial tally of the results, gave you some very high-level feedback there on some of that in the notes there. But looking forward to continue that as we begin our next Open Space Plan event, which is a public forum on the 27th of January. And that will be virtual. But again, just following up on that Open Space Survey, where that committee is now working to invite the public and enhance and gather more comments. From the Elections Department, nomination papers are now available. We've had a couple folks come in and draw their nomination papers. The deadline for that is the 11th of February at 5:00 PM here at Town Hall. And elections are scheduled for the 6th of April, 2021. Another update regarding customer service, back to some of those goals and objectives and the Town Manager goals and objectives. We did complete one week of customer service training. We had two events where we partnered with Amica Insurance Company, where they have a world-class customer service program. They were able to do this virtually. We had two sessions that are scheduled for this week that will still take place. And when we're all done, we'll have 40 individuals from town that will be trained. We're going to come back and use the train, the trainer model, and enhance some of those lessons that we've learned here in town, and take that to the next level within our organization. Also excited, new planner on board. We mentioned that at the last meeting as well. But we have the Master Plan 2030 Project underway. That's now launched a new survey. So again, I'd ask for the, our residents to, you know, show that same enthusiasm they did for the Open Space Plan, to take a look at that Master Plan survey and check that out, and make sure that if they want to volunteer, we have an opportunity through that committee that we are. But you'll also find in that report the website addresses and links to the survey, to the Master Plan webpage, and to our Facebook page that talks about the Master Plan. Okay, moving on to budget items, right? I have received all department budget submissions. We're reviewing those now. We've already started the departmental review of each of those submitted budgets. We have a few more to go. That'll happen this week. Looking forward to completing and wrapping those up. We have completed the initial round of the capital improvement projects review. We've taken all the departments I've sat with and took a brief from the CIP Committee on the projects that are recommended to go forward. I look forward to coming back before Town Council and the Finance Subcommittee to discuss those projects further. Looking for the governor's initial proposed budget, no later than the end of this month. So as that happens, we'll keep everybody posted on that. And then I've agreed in And then I've agreed, and with, primarily with Mark Holwell at Public Works, to a pilot payment that would go to the city of Attleboro for the property that we own that sits in Attleboro. The payment would be sixty nine hundred dollars for this. That's an increase of two hundred dollars from the previous pilot payment that we had with the city of Attleboro. And that isn't aligned with the adjustments that are allowable by that pilot payment. On personnel, and it'd be my last comments, very happy to announce that we have appointed Cheryl Smith as the acting assistant assessor until we fill that position. I had the opportunity to meet with Cheryl and discuss her background and what she does, and she's moving up from a clerk position in the office right now to fill that seat. I also have received and accepted the retirement announcement of Captain Joseph Duranzo from the North Attleboro Police Department. He's announced his retirement to take effect on the thirty first of January, two thousand twenty one, and he will be placed on the retirement rolls at that time. Huge impact to the community, as Captain Duranzo provides a lot of selfless dedicated service to this town, very thankful for all that he does, and we want to wish him the greatest success in all of his future endeavors. We've also begun to follow up on the discussions held about, or the agenda item in previous session on the fourteenth regarding realignment and reorganization. We've taken the next step to talk to some of the impacted bargaining units and began discussion with those. Those are ongoing now, and we'll have more about this later in the agenda items tonight. And finally, just a matter of recognition, I'm in receipt of a letter from the Chief of Police, Chief John Riley, where he outlined some of the actions, the recent actions of our police officers during some very tense situations. And his words were that the integrity, kindness, bravery, and compassion of our police were very notable in each of these incidents, where they were able to employ de-escalation measures and bring some very emotionally charged situations to a safe and controlled outcome without injuries. So again, our police officers face a litany of threats every day, and I just wanted to recognize their efforts and all that they do for this community. Subject to your questions, that completes the Town Manager Report.
Sorry, with me, Mr. Parry, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Point. First, many thanks to, best wishes to Captain Duranzo as he moves on to the next phase of this career. A lot of great service for this town, so personally, I want to thank him for that. The question that I had for you, Mr. President, was, I think you have two actually, first is, were the results of that open space survey released to the public, and if, where can they be found?
Mark?
Council President through you, Council Vice President, they have not been released to the public just yet. This is just, we've turned the survey off, this is just the initial data look that we have. I wanted to share that with you and then inform everybody about that, but as soon as we have those collated and ready to go out, we'll make sure that they're posted to the website and the council has those.
Thank you. And what's the follow-up question, if I may? What's the date of the next, if you don't know, Mr. Borg, tell us via email, but like, you know what the date is of the next public meeting on the spaces?
Yeah, there's a Council President through you, Council Vice President, the next meeting is a public forum, is scheduled for the twenty seventh of January. I will ensure that you have the details and the virtual meeting location for that.
Thank you very much. Mr. Point, if I may, I have one other question.
Go ahead.
Thank you. For the, regards to the master plan, I'm curious, what is, we had some discussion as a council on, you know, whether counselors can be a part of those committees or groups or boards, or whatever it is, that's actually, you know, how that work is going to be broken out. I know it's just the Town Manager's Office to make those decisions. What, through Mr. President, what would the, what do you envision the mechanism we, or council, to inform, participate, have a voice in the master plan process?
Council President through you, Council Vice President. I see that the council has a firm role in this, but it also would be through the Town Manager, through progress reports back to the Town Council on where that particular master plan is. There are several phases that have been laid out. The information is on the website as well, and I do envision that the Town Council would ask me to provide regularly, potentially quarterly updates on the progress of the master plan, and that would be the mechanism for input and feedback.
I would just build, build on it a little bit, Mr. Parry, in my opinion, and we might have to take this offline a little bit, but as the council, as the council, and as members of, of any subcommittee or anything, I think the council, as the council, sort of has a, has a role in talking through, envisioning, and inputting on the master plan. I think we just have to figure out like what the right way of bringing that to action. I certainly, you know, appreciate Mr. Borg's perspective that we would expect regular updates on the process of the plan. But then I think we should just talk about like, what's the best way for us to feed input back in, you know, whether that's us, you know, joining public meetings as counselors, or, you know, providing other feedback. I think we probably want a really good, robust give and take. Maybe we even do that through our council meetings, but I would maybe propose that we take that line, Mr. Parry, you, I, and Mr. Borg can just kind of talk through, best way to make sure that we're capturing council input. Thinking too, just around the responsibility we have in terms of defining the vision for the town and making sure that that vision is a living, breathing thing. Do you remember this past summer, Mr. Borg did an excellent job of leading us through that, getting to a spot that I think we all aligned on, just want to make sure that that has life and isn't, isn't just kind of a one and done, a once a year kind of activity. Mr. Borg?
And Council President, follow up on that, just exactly, I think the, the goals and objectives that the council adopted previously are a good foundation from which to go forward and take to the master plan, but as you said, this is a living, breathing, you know, constantly being updated process. So I see that as a foundation for that, and council has a key role in all of this.
Thanks, Mr. Point.
Mr. Parry, go ahead.
Yeah, you were, you were taking the same way I was, Mr. Point, and so, I like that idea. It's, there's, it seems like there's a mechanism naturally in place for public, and, you know, not necessarily for the council, so I think it's important that we at least talk about that, what the right way is for us to influence that, so I appreciate the openness, thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Parry. Other questions for Mr. Borg on the manager's report? Ms. Voice?
Um, yes, I have a few questions. One is, I see that, that North Attleboro requested two hundred of the COVID vaccines, but we only received one hundred. And I would like to know, what's the reason why we only received one hundred? And I would like to know, would we be receiving more vaccines in the future?
That's.
Council President through you, Council Voice, the minimum requirement was two hundred initially put together by DPH. We put together a consortium of both North Attleboro, Plainville, and Seekonk to achieve those numbers for our first responders only. The original plan was to get those vaccinations from Sturdy, but Sturdy came back and did not have enough vaccinations and had only enough to provide for their employees and staff, as I understand the situation. DPH then advised us that we would only be receiving one hundred vaccinations. The reason or rationale, I can't explain, other than potentially other conflicting priorities and distribution aspects that have been discussed in the media of late, so it would be speculation on my part of why that has happened. But I can assure you that, and I know Pam Hunt, who was on here earlier today, Council on Elderly Affairs has discussed that their agency will receiving vaccinations starting in February, so I see more vaccinations coming through the pipeline. But at this point, right now, it's just our first responders and those hundred vaccines.
Do we have enough for our first responders, like for our Fire Department, Police Department, our EMTs?
Not entirely, Council Voice, not entirely, because we, remember, that's a number between all three of those communities. So we've prioritized based on the potential for exposure and have, you know, vaccinated according to that plan.
So if there's not enough, and there's a need, I mean, are, are you allowed to make a request?
We are, yes, and we are continuing to request vaccinations to keep going, and it's just, there's not vaccination in the approval for us at this time. So, but once we have that, of course, we'll work and make sure that that's conducted and issued.
Okay. My husband was vaccinated yesterday for the COVID nineteen. So, and I know that today they were doing more people, so I was, when I saw that, I was just kind of curious, you know, from two hundred down to one hundred, but thank you. I have another question, and it's regarding the snow removal. I have a concern on, it's on Franklin Street. I know that DPW, you know, for maintenance, for snow removal on Oliver, on all of our roads, on Franklin Street, because we've had rain, that's one of the concerns, it floods, and when it gets cold, it freezes right at the end of the street. So I just wanted to know if Franklin Street is on the list for DPW to, to do maintenance. That was what I was curious about.
Council President through you, I would, you know, the DPW Director's here, I'll let him answer that question.
Hello? Good evening, Mark Holwell, DPW Director. We are aware of the issue on Franklin Street. Actually, we paved it last year and raised it up a few inches. It's just that it sits, you know, at the flood level. You can see it on our FEMA maps, that it's well within the, not even the hundred-year flood, it's within the flood plain, the bottom of that roadway. And we did get a call from the gentleman who lives at the end of the street, and we've put it on our list for going out there after an icing event and sending a small truck down there to sand the bottom of that street, because we do know it floods down there.
Okay, because I know when they paved the road, when they were excavating, they did move all the dirt over, and I seen the, the sewer or the manhole that's there right, right there, and then just after the manhole, you could see all the dirt that was, that was pushed over. And I just wondering, you know, well, I mean, I know Franklin's not the only, the only street, but even some of the other streets that we have here in North Attleboro that's prone to flooding. I just wanted, you know, given that with this winter, you know, I just wanted, I guess I just wanted.
It's within a flood plain, so it's a wetland, so we were limited. I know the gentleman lived at the end, wanted us to pick it up a foot and a half, but I'd have to grade back, and then I'd be filling, technically filling a wetland, which we can't do. So we had the paver, when he milled it, milled it out further and raised it up a few inches, and we actually lost a curb there at the point, but we raised it up enough so he can get in and out on the paved surface, and we actually extended the pavement, probably a couple of feet, a little bit on that. But it is a difficult street, you know, we have a lot of these old roads that were built well before subdivision time, so they just put them down there, there's nowhere to turn around, and where it just ends is a difficult spot. And as you know, Julie, the, those areas are very prone to spreading out when they flood. They are, you know, the
Yes.
driveways are at, you know, the, the top of the, just above the top of the wall there, so it floods all the way to those properties in that area. We are well aware of it, it's just.
Okay, okay, well, I just. Thank you. No, I just wanted to have that noted, if, if we are maintaining those roads, those problem, trouble roads.
Yeah, and then there's a list for us to sand it extra, just because we do know that that bottom area floods, and we don't want anyone to get hurt.
Any other questions in the coming report?
Um, the other one was, oh, and then I, I just want to make a note that I want to say best wishes to Captain Duranzo for his public service for North Attleboro.
Thank you. Others, anyone else have questions for Mr. Borg? I don't see any, so we will go ahead and move forward in the agenda, Town Manager's Report, Subcommittee Updates, Finance, Mr. Parry.
Thank you, Mr. Point. Finance Committee, the only update I have is that we will be meeting on Wednesday night this week at six thirty, it's January thirteenth, remote meeting, two measures for us. One on a backfire replacement, and the other one is to supplement the library. So we'll be taking those up on Wednesday, and we'll have recommendations for our next town meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Parry. Bylaw, Ms. Cathcart.
Yes, we are meeting Thursday. Unfortunately, due to issues and some miscommunication, we weren't able to establish a quorum at the last scheduled meeting, which was December sixteenth. But I have been assured by all the other members that we are ready to go, and we will be working diligently on the bylaws this Thursday. Thank you.
Okay, very good. Let me know, Ms. Cathcart, if there's anything you want on that January twenty fifth agenda.
After you. I will, thank you. Okay, thank you.
Rules, Mr. Lennox.
Thank you, Mr. President. We are shooting to have our next meeting for next Thursday evening, and we'll be reviewing Section Eight draft. Just for everybody's edification, there is nine sections, so we are, we are coming up on somewhat of a completion to this, but everyone will see the next draft probably within the next few meetings. Well, thank you.
So, just a request, just occurred to me as I'm kind of looking at everybody's faces, could you send what's been approved, Mr. Shanahan?
Absolutely. So, actually, I should have mentioned this. One of the things I'm doing right now is I'm actually making a binder. I'm going through all of my records and making a binder of everything that I have that's been approved. There is still a few redlined areas in some of the approved things that were going to be reviewed when we had the final document together, so just as long as that's somewhat acknowledged, but the basis of everything else is, is pretty good, and I'll try to get that all together in the next week, and at least get that to the manager's office, and then whoever wants to see it from there, maybe it can be posted, or, we can talk about what, what we want to do with it, but definitely.
Thanks, Mr. Lennox. At School Committee, Seth, that's me. They were actually, they're meeting right now. I was at their meeting for about forty-five minutes before I cut over to our meeting. The one, probably two things I would just mention, from a budget perspective, they were obviously with us last week, and they did discuss a little bit earlier this evening. I just wanted to understand how the process moves from here, so made sure that they understood as a committee, that the school administration's meeting with Mr. Borg, as the full town budget comes together, we'll see a copy of that before February fifteenth. And then I assured them that the Finance Subcommittee would be, you know, conducting meetings through the Town Manager's Office, getting input from the relevant departments, including schools, so. So I think they were happy to hear that. The other update I would give you is, if you remember, when they rolled out one-to-one devices for Chromebooks, it was basically, you know, middle school through twelfth grade. And since COVID, they've put in a real aggressive effort to get one-to-one deployed at all levels. Of course, we're all pretty well aware that it was hard to get computers over this past year. There was a global surge in supply, demand, way outstrip supply. So they've been chipping away at that, and they actually just got another big shipment last week, so I think at this point, they actually are fully deployed, which, you know, coming out of the override, when they made that decision to, to go with the Chromebooks instead of more, you know, physical paper assets and other things. I don't think any of us anticipated the pandemic, but sure is lucky that that's the direction they went, otherwise this year would have looked totally different for our students, so. So they talked about that a little bit tonight. One thing I do think we're going to have to get ahead of is those are leased assets. So those leases are going to be coming due, I think, next year. So we're going to have to have a plan on how the extension of those is going to be funded. So I think it crossed my mind in the, in the meeting tonight. That's it from schools. I will turn it over to economic growth and sustainability, Mr. Gregory.
I don't have an update for you all this evening, but I am looking forward to the presentation being led by Mark Hallwell. So that's about it.
Thanks, Mr. Gregory. Just for everybody from an agenda point of view, we do have a discussion about town and properties tonight. What, what I discussed with Mr. Gregory is we're going to have Mr. Borg kind of present the initial data to us this week and not really go too deep into discussion. I'll bring it back to the agenda on the 25th, at which point I think we can refer the topic to, to the Economic Growth and Sustainability Committee. But I know Mr. Gregory was looking for some council input on that. So that's the way we're going to handle it. We're going to get an initial briefing tonight. We'll revisit it on the 25th, at which point the council will have had two weeks to think about it and provide any input they want to provide to the subcommittee. And then I'd be looking for a vote to refer the topic to the subcommittee. All right, good. Thank you, Mr. Gregory. Let's keep moving on, old business discussion and a referral of reorganization initiatives. Mr. Borg.
House President, thank you and through you. Just wanted to follow up on the presentation that we had in December for realignment, reorganization. Tonight, my objective is to talk to you about three, the primary initiatives that were concerned that and kind of give you an update where some of these other matters are. The three initiatives that I'd like to talk to you tonight, one would be the Director of Facilities. Just a quick refresher on that position and what I believe the next steps are regarding that. The second discussion would be on the solid waste department, just an update again on that proposal. And then recommendations and discussion for the next steps for that one. The third issue would be the assessor's office realignment, as discussed earlier in the previous month on the reorganization briefing, where we're at on that. And a couple of these items, I'll just lay out where we're at, where I think the next referrals need to go, and then how I see these unfolding. And then I'll give you a quick update on some of the other initiatives that were contained in that briefing to just bring you up to date on where those are all at. So starting off with the first one, the Director of Facilities. This was a position that I had proposed in the, to bring together all of the facilities operations here in town. As you, as you know, that facilities are and represent a huge asset within the town and require a certain amount of dedication and upkeep and required maintenance. The issue and the rationale for this particular proposal is department heads or select individuals, depending on the building or facility, manage their facilities. Unlike the schools, the schools actually have, within their organization, a dedicated facilities team to address this. Where on the town side, we do not. One of the things that I would like to do going forward is, and I actually think the greatest success for this potential position is collaboration and coordination with the school department. I am not looking to create a position that would be a burden or an additional item to the organization itself, but I do think that we have some of that structure existing already between both town and schools. So the, the path forward for this recommendation right now lies with the school department and working with the school committee to do a deep dive on the potential for collaborating, much like we already do with the HR department. If you go back to the charter, the HR department was actually a department that was singled out in the charter for that joint collaboration between town and schools. I'm looking to create that same type, same type of synergy and not creating dual positions, but having a single common standard for facilities maintenance within town. We do have a budget review scheduled, and this was mentioned earlier, with the school department for this Wednesday. So I have their initial budget numbers and we're looking forward to, you know, going over all of those numbers. And, but also I'd like to bring up this topic with them, and I believe this is the next step, in determining if we can find common ground and a path forward to create a joint position between both schools and the town. I, I think it's imperative, and any success that this Director of Facilities might have, it's going to be something that we work cooperatively with the schools. If that's approved, I think we can actually achieve that. If it's not approved, right, I, I don't think that this actually would go forward and I don't need a, a referral to bylaw or finance committee, because it would just die in place where it's at on the vine and come back another day. Warranted or needed. But, but I do really believe that this position can be accomplished and achieve some of those cost savings in the long term by standardizing and establishing, you know, routine maintenance and scheduled maintenance throughout our facilities. The potential solution, though, if it doesn't pan out, is there's a CIP project for asset management that's currently before myself right now. And, you know, Mr. Hallwell was the initiator of that CIP request. But the solution that we're potentially looking at really does cover a lot of, some of the things that this facilities manager would be handling on a day-to-day basis. Granted, a software solution where I believe you would want to have a person leading this effort, but at least we'd all have a same piece of common operating picture, software that talks to us about standardizing and scheduling that routine maintenance and upkeep of our facilities. So that's the first track. So my recommendation on the Director of Facilities is to come back to you after discussions with the schools, discuss the viability of that particular position and be able to either move it forward or kill it in place. Questions on the Director of Facilities?
Mr. Gregory?
So the conversations with the school department superintendent in particular, have they already transpired? Or this is like the first step of once you put the position, potential joint position together, to now have that conversation?
Council President through you, Council Gregory, we, we've already had some preliminary discussions. And there's some, we've agreed to come back to the table and discuss further and look for potential ways to make. Look, I, I will tell you, the schools are concerned about having a position that they believe would not be responsive to the schools. But, so we have to figure out how to mitigate those particular issues. But I, I think there's plenty of opportunity here where we can come to the table and figure out how to make this go forward. So conversations will continue.
So my follow-up for that is, just so I'm understanding clearly, your ideal situation would be a joint position where you also give this particular individual access to a software program, in essence, to manage all townwide facilities, which would actually make his or her job a little bit easier to manage a larger portfolio. Best case scenario is that, and then from there you'll scale back based on where you get with the schools.
Council President through you, Council Gregory, absolutely, except with the only caveat is the schools already own that software. We're, we'd like to use that here on the town side and expand it to the town side.
Got you. Thank you.
Mr. Simmons, I saw your hand earlier.
Thank you, Mr. President, through you. Just, just wondering if there is a way to structure this position where you have maintenance at a certain level, not having to trigger this position, the schools are just able to handle the routine maintenance without having to go through the town itself. But then for the larger picture, the envelope of the buildings, maybe then have that fall under the town. That way the schools understand that they still have a voice and some, some can fall over their facilities, but the town gets the benefit of having one person in charge of all the buildings townwide.
Council President through you, Council Simmons, absolutely. I, I think the, the outcome here, and really this really is focused is on building envelope and working at that level and having a common standard for both schools and town. So I, I think that's the imperative here is having that same standard and having one individual working in and making sure that those standards are met.
Mr. Pari?
Thank you, Mr. LePointe. Through you, I think this is a, I think going through the school committee, have that conversation, it's a great idea. We can't do this without the schools. So I think you're, I think you're wise in, you know, going there first, having that conversation. And by the way, I, I think in terms of the, I don't know what the software is, the schools use. However, it seems like a good idea regardless of whether or not you go forward with the reorganization or not to standardize on, on this software, right, and have everything to the same view, the same prism. I mean, I know even within the town, our, our maintenance, you know, isn't, isn't consolidated. So even on the town side, like the software would probably have a benefit. So I love that idea and I'm looking forward to, you know, getting that CIP request in the future.
Council President through you, the, the name of the software, it's a horrible name for software, but it's called, it's Dude Solutions. And I actually talked with the manufacturer and they said, the reason they came up with that name was any dude could do it. So I was like, you might want to consider something else in the future.
All right, where do we go from there? Other questions or comments? Ms. Voice?
I just want to say I confer with, with Justin Pear on what he said. What I wanted to know was currently, right now, we already have someone that, that's in charge of our facilities already with the school. And we already have someone for, for, for us, for the town side of it, right? Do we? No?
Council President through you, Councilor Voice, department heads serve in that capacity as an additional duty to their other requirements.
Meaning like their, to their own, to their own departments?
Yeah, for example, Chief Riley at the police department manages all facilities, maintenance, upkeep, in addition to his other, you know, daily duties at the police station. So he's also the, the primary one that takes care of the facility.
Okay, so, all right, all right, that, well, that explains it then. I guess this is good, I guess we just need more, more discussions on this. Okay, thank you.
The only thing I'll add, Mr. Borg, is, you know, I was in the school committee meeting, I think, when this was first approached. And, you know, there was definitely some concern about volume, because I think that position is, is, you know, a full-time plus job. But what was interesting in that discussion then was just the difference, I think, between like a department head and an executioner. It seems like that, you know, folks, you know, Mr. Comer just left and now you've got Mr. George in it right now. They're, they're leading the department, but they're also like changing light bulbs and, you know, fixing toilets too. So I think if we can actually elevate that to a more strategic position and make sure we've got the right staff to execute maintenance, I think that's going to be the key to that conversation. That coupled, of course, with the concept of control, right? Because that, that's obviously, you know, what they're, they're most concerned about. By the way, there's this kind of similar concerns too with like lawn maintenance and things like that. I know you're going to get that at some point, but it's the same, same general concern is that desire to have control over the assets that support the students, which, which I get, right? I get it, if you've got that today, you know, you want to make sure that that's protected in the future. Question for you. Do you want a referral to bylaw pending your successful discussion with schools? Or do you want to go have that discussion and then come back to us for the referral? I just don't want to like let a bunch of time needlessly waste if bylaw can talk about this, you know, get yourself in a good position.
Council President, my preference at this point is to wait until I've had the further discussion with the superintendent, school committee, and then I would come back to you some, you know, on the 25th and make a recommendation at that point.
Very good. All right, let's go to solid waste then.
Did you say bylaw, Keith? I'm sorry.
Bylaw, yeah, bylaw.
Is there one already written up already? Do we have a copy of that?
No.
Or is he going to present that to us later?
Well, yeah, that's the reason to go to bylaws, to, to study that, right? So right now, these departments are all defined by bylaws. So if you're going to start moving them around, you'd have to propose a bylaw to change that.
All right, thanks for clarifying it.
No, sorry. Yeah, and I think the plan that Mr. Borg and I have talked about is to go to bylaw first, figure out exactly what needs to be done, and then you would go to finance to just make sure that the, the trade-offs, savings, whatever, were sorted out and then come back to council with the two recommendations.
Okay.
Solid waste, Mr. Borg?
All right, Council President through you.
Could, I'm sorry, going forward, and I'm pretty sure Mr. Borg is doing this, but when, when he is looking at it, I want to save money. So anyway, that, you know, whatever's the most savings, okay?
Absolutely.
For you, Mr. Borg, point, point taken. All right, let's go to solid waste.
All right, Council President through you, solid waste proposal that I presented was to convert the, the current solid waste department in its current form to a division under Public Works. And it meets the definition under reorg, or for what we believe the definition of reorganization outlined in the charter. This would co-locate solid waste at the Department of Public Works as well as their office at the current transfer station landfill. There is a CIP proposal that we are looking at right now for an upgrade to the facility at the transfer station. We're examining that as a part of this as well. We have reached out to the bargaining units that are impacted by this. Currently, there are two, the APSME and the United Steelworkers bargaining units for this to begin the discussions on outlining that move. I believe the next steps for this is to complete the discussions with the bargaining units, understand their input and impact bargaining requirements or discussions with them. And then I would ask that this would be moved to bylaw for study and formation into a bylaw that would represent moving the solid waste department as a department into a division of Public Works, following a, an approval of a bylaw coming out of the bylaw committee, then into FinCom to a budget during this next upcoming FY, so where it would be appropriately addressed and accounted for in the budget process. So again, just to reconfirm, solid waste would ask for a referral pending the discussions, ongoing discussions with the bargaining units, and then to bring this matter before the bylaw committee, and then followed by finance. Subject to your questions.
Ms. Kathcart?
Thank you. Mr. Borg, I want to know if you have had the opportunity to discuss this with the Board of Public Works. Since through the charter, that was one of the boards that was left as an elected board.
Yeah.
Are we, we need to make sure that this is something that they would have full approval on, or at least full agreement on. So I'm concerned about that. I'm very concerned about how much money it's going to cost to do the renovations to the transfer station. So I think that has to really be looked at closely. But I want to make sure that we haven't, are not establishing a conflict with the BPW.
I can see Mr. Hallwell raising his hand. I'll go to Mr. Hallwell.
Yeah, I, I've been talking to the board about this as we bring it, brought this along. We've just recently sat down, Mr. Borg and I, I've sat with Michelle to talk about the, the facility up there, bringing people over. And my board is supportive of this. They haven't taken a vote, I suppose that's something that we should do at some point. Have Mr. Borg again, have the board discuss the long-term plan of it. I actually just completed a, a markup of org chart moving forward today. Sorry, I didn't get a team this morning. So this is something we've been developing, we've been talking about it for the past several months. And it's certainly something that, you know, when we're fully fleshed out, we'll bring it to the board for, we can bring it to them for discussion.
Mr. Borg?
Council President through you, and Council Kathcart, absolutely, it is an oversight on my part, it, it is. part, it, it is recognizing that, you know, my desire is any boards that are impacted by some of these moves, that there is communication and discussion with them. As you'll see that in my remarks for the assessors, but absolutely, I, I need to finish though, the, the first step, which is the discussions with the impacted bargaining units and their concerns and input for this process. And then once we have that, formulate what that actually looks like, and then take it to the Board of Public Works for their input, and then back into bylaw.
Hollow, please.
Yep, go ahead.
I, I am assuming that because solid waste is going to maintain their, as an enterprise account, will they stay separately as an enterprise account? And also then, is it safe to assume that the funding will come through the enterprise account for any changes?
Council President, through you, Council Cathcart, right now, it, there's no plan to change the current structure of the enterprise funds. It would still remain as a, the solid waste enterprise fund, just under the direction of the Director of Public Works. You would have sewer, water, and solid waste.
And they will assume all the financial liability through the enterprise?
They would.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Voice, I saw your hand.
I, I was going to say, I agree. I don't think we could real, I mean, we can do all the discussions, but the Board of Public Works, they are elected, and they would definitely would have to vote in favor of, of doing this. That, I just wanted to note that. I agree with you.
I, I'll just chime in here. I, I do think the Board of Public Works absolutely positively needs to be part of this discussion and input. But I, I do think the Charter very clearly gives the authority to the town manager to make this move. So I, I think even if the Board of Public Works voted it down, this could still happen. That being said, the Board of Public Works has been in support of this for years now. I remember being a selectman and, and dealing with this exact issue. So I, I do think, I, I just don't want that, that community misled, that the Charter does. I, I think, Mr. Borg, tell me if you see it differently, but I do think pretty clearly gives you the right to do this.
Council President, through you, I, I, I would just add the following comment. Through the creation of a bylaw that the Town Council then adopts and approves. So it is a, I see it really as a joint effort between the Town Manager and the Town Council to affect that. But absolutely, that's where I think the, the ability to create that reorganization lies.
And just to make my own comments clear, I'm not at all, again, I want to make it clear, the Board of Public Works should absolutely positively be involved in this, and they have been involved in it. So I'm not suggesting with my comments that anything should be done around them. I just want to be clear on what I think the Charter says. Mr. Lennox, I saw your hand.
Thank you, Mr. President. It, it's actually just a change of the bylaw. The bylaw already exists to put the, the solid waste under what was formerly the Board of Selectmen, now Town Manager, so that
Yeah, no, they have.
A rewording or, or change or revision, however you want to put it, in, as I remember it, at least.
That's right. All right, so tonight, Mr. Borg, do you, same question I had before, do you want a referral pending your discussions with APSME and USW? Or do you want to finish that and then, then seek the referral on the 25th?
Council President, these conversations are moving along fairly well, so I'd, I'd like a, a referral pending completion of those discussions with bargaining units.
Okay. Mr. Parry, you want to go ahead and, and make that motion?
Sure. I move to refer the topic of reorganization of solid waste department to the bylaw committee pending the completion of further discussions with the respective bargaining units.
I think I got Mr. Gregory, a motion from Mr. Parry, and a second from Mr. Gregory. Is there any other discussion on this referral to bylaw? We see none. It's a roll call vote. Mr. Shanahan?
Yes.
Mr. Shanahan votes yes, Ms. Prescott?
Yes.
Ms. Prescott votes yes, Mr. Gregory?
Yes.
Gregory votes yes, Ms. Voice?
Yes.
Ms. Voice votes yes, Mr. Simmons?
Yes.
Mr. Simmons votes yes, Ms. Cathcart?
Yes.
Cathcart votes yes, Mr. Lennox?
Yes.
Lennox votes yes, Mr. Parry?
Yes.
Parry votes yes, I keep the point vote, yes. So it's nine zero, referring this topic to bylaw. Mr. Borg, I assume you'll just communicate with Ms. Cathcart once, once you're ready and can figure out scheduling with that subcommittee?
Council President, absolutely.
Very good. Let's go to assessors.
Right, Council President, through you, the Assessor's Office realignment, going back to my proposal, with the departure of Ms. Caduto from the Assistant Assessor's position, has presented an opportunity. You, you heard this evening that I did appoint Ms. Cheryl Smith as the Acting Assistant Assessor. We're, we're happy to have her in, as a part of that, and picking up where Sheila left off. We are in discussions with the bargaining units now for this. Again, the two bargaining units impacted by this realignment effort are both USW and the APSME clerks. I believe the next steps, one, are to complete the discussions with APSME and USW regarding the changes that we see for here. I have been invited to the Board of Assessors for this Thursday to talk in depth a little more about this particular realignment. And at this point, based on the recommendations that we have, there is really, because assessors is not moving, their essential structure is not changing. I reached out to KP Law for an opinion on if this was reorganization, and received an opinion that it, it was not, it was simply realignment, and would not require bylaw approval to do it. It would simply go before finance at the appropriate time with budget, with that budget, because it retains intact essentially the same positions that are there with some modifications of job descriptions. So with that KP Law verbal opinion, I do not believe I need to go to bylaw for this particular one, but I would like to meet with the assessors and outline the specifics of what this looks like, and then come back before you and outline what those are, and then ask for a referral into finance for that particular realignment of this department.
Okay, any, any questions on this for anyone? Mr. Parry?
Mr. Freshman Murray, please, through you, Ms. Leopold, is, is there a, is there a proposal on the table? I don't, for this, is there a, is there a proposal?
I'm going to, let me pull up the slide. From the presentation, from the 14th of December, the reorganization, right, which essentially did not change because the Assistant Assessor remains in place, and the, the other positions are a clerks and a data collector. There's really no change in that, other than the addition of a principal assessor, which, you know, I, I would like to discuss in detail with the Board of Assessors first, outline that, garner their support, then come back. Because it doesn't really fundamentally change, that department is not reorganization, and it's just the creation of that additional position that would have to be funded.
Okay, thank you for refreshing. Appreciate that.
Ms. Voice?
Um, I wanted to ask, could you put it on the screen? If you have it? Is there a way that you could put it on our screen?
Council President, through you, I'll, I'll pull it up. I have it ready. Okay, this is, I, I won't go to full screen because it kind of messed it, but I'll blow this up a little bit. This is the current organization. As it exists today, you have the Assistant Assessor that reports directly to the Town Manager, and then three positions, a data collector and two admin assistants, a clerks. My proposal is, and working, and subject to further discussions with the Board of Assessors, which I've had some preliminary and substantial discussions with them on this, to establish a principal assessor, an assistant assessor, we retain a, a principal clerk and a clerk, that would be a part of that. And that exists, the three positions that are here at the bottom are in existence already. It would just simply be the addition of this principal assessor with appropriate job description, and moving that forward. And again, because that does not change, fundamentally change that department, but just realigns it with the current form of government, and there's no difference or requirement, I see, and, and with the opinion I have from KP Law for bylaw. But again, it would go before finance for funding.
Do we still, does that still include the Board of Assessors?
The, the Board of Assessors does not go away. It's not within the purview of this, you know, the Town Manager to do away with any Board or Committee. So those are, so they will serve as an advisory board, deal with all the appellate issues, all the ZBA correction, all the abatements that request that they receive. They will still all do that. And I, I look forward to having further discussions in depth and detail with the Board of Assessors this Thursday.
Mr. Borg, is it possible, do we? I know that if we, if this does move forward, it would, it would be an additional, adding another new employee, right? If we move forward, right?
No, my, my, if the current department has four personnel assigned, this department, as I'm proposing, would have four personnel assigned.
Okay, so we wouldn't, because you mentioned adding, so I just, or you, or do you mean just adding meaning just changing the name?
We are, I'm adding a principal assessor. But there, you don't see the, the, the data collector position, it would be removed going forward.
Okay, all right, you just clarified it. Thank you.
Okay, others? So we'll, we'll wait on you then, Mr. Borg, to come back to us after you've had an opportunity to meet with the assessors. But I think, you know, pending funding of any changes, there's probably not a lot, otherwise that the council needs to do on this. Just approve, i, if there's any funding changes.
That's correct. And, and I, I'm looking forward to going to finance to outline exactly the, the savings and the impact of this particular recommendation.
All right, that'd be good.
All right, good. So I, I think we're good then. So that takes us through the three points you noted at the beginning around reorganizations. Did you want to cover some of the other pieces from a status perspective, Mr. Borg?
Council President, through you, if you allow me, very quickly, on that previous proposal under the realignment, the Pond and Beach Administration, that's going into effect. We're reorganizing the budget submission for FY22 to reflect that, of shifting the, the cost for beach lifeguards and parking attendants over to the Parks and Recs Department. The HR Confidential Assistant is complete. Discussions with the bargaining unit are done, and that's in effect. The Zoning and Conservation Clerk, that was created from two part-time positions. The bargaining unit discussions are that, are complete. We're working that into the current and the next budget. Lenore's Pantry, meeting with the Architectural Services that we had for the facilities review of Allen Ave, and also with the Hockamok Y on the Greater Attleboro Area Food Pantry Operation. So that takes place this week. But again, the next, the next step for Lenore's Pantry is to understand the potential CIP projects that would derive from bringing Allen, to bring Allen Ave up to speed to be able to function as that facility. So that one's ongoing. Centralized procurement, looking at implementing that in July, and then the staffing and equipment authorization, looking at that in July. The one I did not discuss this evening was the Office of Community Development, doing more research on that one, but looking forward to looking at how we structure and look at the organization. And, you know, that can be fed into future discussions when I'm, you know, have more information and be able to present that coherently to the council.
Okay, good. Thanks, Mr. Borg. Any questions? Ms. Voice?
Uh, yes, through you, Keith. Did, um, did, uh, do you have the report already for Allen Ave?
Uh, no, I, I get it this Thursday, Council President, I get it this Thursday.
Okay, will we all receive a copy of it, or will you let us know at our next meeting?
I'm, Councilor Voice and Council President, through you, happy to share that information once I have it. But understanding this, it's an architectural assessment of the facility, and with recommendations and potential costs, that needs to go into CIP, because I think that's the appropriate place for that to, to be do it. So I would come back, and you would probably see all of this, you know, depending on what the requirements are of this, to maintain this facility, and it would be handled through CIP.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
Sure. Seeing no other questions, let's go ahead and keep moving. Thank you, Mr. Borg, for all the updates. The only action we took was that one referral, so we can get back at it on the 25th. That moves us into new business. We covered the two appointments. Next up is the PFA discussion. Mr. Borg, Mr. Hollow, I'll turn it over to you.
Council President, through you. The, Mr. Hollow and I have had a, a number of discussions regarding PFAS, the, let me see if I can get this right, polyfluoroalkylides that are potentially in the water system, and we have some testing back that indicates that these are in our water system. Initial reports came out when we partnered with the, the state, the Commonwealth and DEP to address the, the ongoing issues and the coming regulations that were being proposed by DEP, and then eventually put into place. But rather, my, me fumbling through it, I'd like to turn it over to Mr. Hollowell to give you an in-depth understanding of what's happened and where we're at today.
Great, Mr. Hollow.
Good evening again, Mike Hollowell, DPW Director. Just to give everyone the background on this really quick, PFAS is something that the EPA has been looking at since early 2000s. In 2013, actually, we, every community has to do what's called UCMR III. This is a third round of UCMR, which is unregulated contaminant, contaminant monitoring rule. And every five years, the EPA picks a bunch of contaminants that they want the towns to sample. And we actually sampled for PFAS in 2013, and we came up non-detect. The issue was, they only asked us to look down from 90 to 10 parts per billion. So we had no non-detection at all of our wells at 10 parts per billion, which is a fairly small for looking at a substance. Come around to 2019, early 2019, the EPA issued an action plan for PFAS, which stated that they, they had an advisory of 70 parts per trillion, which is obviously a lot lower than the 10 parts per billion that they had previously. But they had done some studies and found that it could have long-term health effects on pregnant women, babies, could have issues with your liver. And again, these are long-term effects on this. In 2020, August of 2020, the DEP reached out to all the Massachusetts communities, and they had some grant funding, because they were about to set in place in October, a new regulation, a maximum contaminant level, MCL. And it was going to be 20 parts per trillion, which is far lower than the EPA's advisory. But they were getting the sense that at some point, if the EPA ever came out with a contaminant level, it would be lowered. They offered all the communities free testing of the, for PFAS, for all your facilities. We have nine wells, which I'll show you in a moment. Mike, I don't know if you hooked me back up, but, so we have nine wells in town and two finished wells. So we have two areas where the water comes in and blends from different well sites. So we have nine wells in town and two finished wells, so we have two areas where the water comes in and blends from different well sites. And goes out into the system, so the EP, the DEP agreed to, at their cost, test all wells and then test those two additional sites. So there was 11 sites. And they did that over actually two tranches in late October, early November. We did the first set of wells and then in late November, just before Thanksgiving, we did the second set of wells. And it takes about three or four weeks for these results to come back. The first set of wells that we did, and I'm going to share my screen and show you. This is a map of the town. The color blue is our water system. And you can see we have. Can you guys all see that? Just to make sure, okay. Up here, these are our Plainville wells, we have four wells in Plainville along with a well that Plainville owns and treats at our water plant. Over in this side of town, this is Kelly Boulevard right here. And these are our McKean, Kelly Wells with our McKean Treatment Plant. That's on Mary Kennedy Drive towards the Attleboro border. And then down, way down south here. We have the Hillman Well, which is at the old Girl Scout camp. And then over at the bottom of Grandview Drive, we have the Adam's Dale Well. And if I can zoom in on these real quick. You can see our. If I zoom in. You can see we have the well systems, here's Plainville 1, Plainville 4, Plainville 2. Plainville 3, that was our first well that got a hit. That exceeded 20 parts per trillion in our first round. We did secondary sampling and the results came a little bit lower, but still above 20. And as you can see, this well is located along Fuller Street in Plainville. And not too far away from where there's the industrial park and some other stuff. So I wasn't overly surprised to find that over 20. The other wells that we have in the system, which are fairly close by, Plainville 2, Plainville 4. And well 3, which is Plainville Wells, those all came in fairly low, above 10 parts per trillion. But below the 20. So the requirement the DEP has for those wells is that they're to be monitored every quarter. And if we continue down. These, these are piped all the way into my facility here at Whiting Street. And we have the Whiting Street well. And those all go back into the plant, get treated and shipped off into the system. And the final effluent at the discharge at the waste, at the water plant was below, consistently below 20 parts per trillion. So the DEP says as long as you can blend the water and get below 20 parts per trillion, no treatments required. So in our first round of testing, these are the wells that we tested and found that to be below 20 parts per trillion, even though we had one well that exceeded it. We've set up standard operating procedures and are putting it into our SCADA system, which is our supervisory control system that allows us to remotely control the wells. That if that well is running by itself, it's got an automatic shut off, so that'll stop it from running. On the eastern side of town. Sorry, my computer's a little slow. In this area here, again, this is Mary Kennedy Drive. At the end of Mary Kennedy, we have two wells. There's one down here, that's Kelly Well 2. And then Kelly 1. That well came back at 30 parts per trillion in our first round. And we just got our second round back today. And that round, that second round was at 12.8. So we're talking with the DEP about whether their, their regulations say that if you do two rounds, you add them together and they, they come up with the, with the average number for that. Which would put Kelly Well at about 22, a little bit below 22, which should still be exceeding. But then that would mean what's coming out of this plant would be below 20 parts per trillion. And so we wouldn't have to do treatment there. We also have a third well, Kelly Well out here, that well's registered, but it's not developed. So we'd have to put some significant funding into that well if we ever wanted to turn that into a potable drinking water well. But that's always a backup source. And by significant money, probably a half million dollars to get that up, put SCADA in it, redo all the pumps. And reconnect it to the treatment plant that's out there. So that's our second well. And as I said, we found out today that we may not need to do any further work on that well because of the blending ability on that. And our last well. And again, as I mentioned, on the south side of town. Sorry, there's a lot of information in my GIS plans here. But also you can see my pretty water system. Yes, small. And then our last well is on the far end of town. And this is the interesting thing about PFAS. You know, again, this was used in firefighting gear. It's also was used in making of carpets and grease resistant fabrics and things like that. But if you look at this well, this well is out in the middle of nowhere. This is the Abbott Run coming down through this area here. This is the property owned by the Conservation Commission up here. There's the old railroad bed that goes by on the other side of the river. But this came back twice at 24 parts per trillion and 21.7 parts per trillion just today. And so this one will require treatment in order for us to turn that back on. We had a meeting with the, so to go through the timeline, we went out and did sampling. We found out in early December about the first wells. We found out. Our second round of tests, we found out on. I think it was the 7th of December, we got the second rounded test results back. We actually had a meeting with the DEP immediately following that about two days afterwards. To go through it, what are notification requirements for, were for that? And what the long-term plan was. And the DEP at the time said, as long as we could take the wells offline, which we did as soon as we got the second results back. That we didn't need a new notification, but we'd have to put it on our consumer conference report in June. And we told the DEP, you know, as soon as we could, after we got our ducks in a row, that we wanted to start putting the information, making it public to everybody. So they understood exactly what was happening because we are going to have to treat this well. So I talked to Mr. Borg, talked to the members of my board about it. I actually haven't even met with my board yet because we haven't had a meeting since we got the confirmation, got the results back yet. And we sent out for a confirmation, confirmation results, which as I said, just came back today. And they confirmed Adam's Dale. But they put Kelly Well into question, whether we got a bad sample on the first Kelly round or maybe something happened. We, we did do some work on Kelly 1, not too long before we did the sampling out there. Probably in October, early November. So maybe there was something in the pumps that were on there, so we're rechecking that. Moving forward as, after our meeting with the DEP, they let us know that there was a grant out there for design. So we put in $200,000, we selected for the Adam's Dale Well, only because that well's on the far west side of town, hydraulically, it would be better to have that well on because I have another well at Kelly that I could run. So we all agreed that Adam's Dale would be the first one to go after for treatment. And it turns out, that's lucky for us because we may not have to do it on Kelly. So right now, we're looking at a design for our wells, which is going to be about $375,000 just for the design for Adam's Dale Well. With their, and again, it's very hard at this point to tell what sort of treatment exactly we're going to need. But they know what's going to be in the ballpark of $3 to $4 million. The treatment for this is granular activated carbon. They're going to need large vessels. They're probably about 12, 15 feet wide and 30 to 40 feet long. And they're filled with a granular activated, granular activated carbon, which is a disposable material that that's going to have to be backwashed and replaced periodically, so that'll have to be in our long-term plan for this. But right now, we're looking at $3 to $4 million for the treatment for this one well. If we don't have to do the Kelly Well, it puts us in a much better position for this summer. Where we thought we were going to lose 2 million gallons a day, and if we were only losing 1 million gallons a day. We could probably with some conservation measures, going for to one day a week watering instead of two days a week. We probably could get by with the, with the loss of one well, the loss of both wells. We would definitely have issues for moving forward. So that, Mr. Borg, I provided you a timeline, I don't know if you had a chance to share it with the council, or if you want me to just quickly go through what our next steps are.
I have it, I can bring it up.
So. The point is, this is all moving very fast. We are, we certainly would never want to, you know, hide anything. I don't think that there's any advantage to that for the community, I didn't put it in there. Blame Coleman, the firefighting gear, no, it's not that, this has probably been in your water for 20 years. So everybody who thinks, you know, we're in panic mode, it really is. You know, they've been looking at it, testing it since 2003. And they've just come down to the parts per trillion level, so, you know, they knew what was out there, they just didn't know to what extent. So again, this is the general timeline. I'm sure one of these days is off sooner or later, but again, we did our testing, we submitted a grant to the DEP for $200,000 for design. It's not all the design money, but it'll be more than half. Mr. Borg notified you at the State of the Town address because that was the first opportunity we had to let people know about it on a public level. With some intellectual conversation. We're meeting with you tonight and a meeting with my board to discuss the plan and how it's going to affect us at my meeting on Wednesday. We're looking to finalize a contract with our consultant on February 1st. I have that in hand. And we're looking to have bid plans done by June 30th. We have a little bit of advantage because the consultants have already been out there, they've done work on the Adam's Dale Well. And have the existing layout of the site already in their CAD file. So it'll save a little bit of money and time moving forward on that. And we're looking to put the project out to bid, possibly start it in September and have the construction substantially complete. I'll call it April 1, I'm not sure how big it's going to be or how much work's going to be involved. And the other thing is, we're testing early, as I might have mentioned last time. We're not supposed to start testing till April 1. So all of the other medium-sized communities, which is probably about 200 in the state. If they haven't gotten in on the early testing, they're all going to have to start testing in April. And once they find out they have PFAS, which I imagine many will, Phil Foxborough, who all got in on the early all have found it. They're all going to be scrambling for the same design engineers, the same contractors, the same vessels that you have to buy. So even getting in on this a few months ahead of the crowd is going to help us quite a bit in getting this project to fruition before next summer. So that's where we stand right now. I know that's a lot to take in and available to answer any questions you guys might have.
Great, thanks, Mr. Hollowell, a lot of information. Questions? Mr. Lennox?
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Mr. Hollowell, for that presentation, answered a few different questions that I had. One of the things that did resonate during the State of the Town was a comment that the, this would end up being paid for by the ratepayers. Part of my question in regards to that would be. Given the, given the financial situation of a lot of residents and the current situation with the town, is the thing that, instead of putting it right on to the ratepayers, could this be borrowed for? And work done that way in addition? Does that, could that encompass some of the work that perhaps might still need to be done for the fluoridization? Equipment that I know you had issues with in the recent past. But I guess, just my question is, is that something that, that we have to stack on to the ratepayers right now? Or given our, the town's financial situation, could we potentially borrow for that? I know it all kind of comes out of the same place, but when you start stacking more on the ratepayers right now, that's going to go over poorly.
Yeah, actually, I'm, I'm in the process of working out my, finalizing my budget for Mr. Borg right now. And we actually added into that the, the plan for borrowing that money. A million dollars, and Chris Sweet's on the line, so he can tell me if I'm wrong. I'm borrowing a million dollars, about $70,000 a year, if you borrow a million dollars over a 20-year period. Right now, the DEP is talking about putting this on the SRF so we could possibly get 0% financing on it. Which would be somewhat advantageous. And we have the dumb luck of my Whiting Treatment Plant, which was built in 2001. It falls off the tax, the debt rolls this year, so we do have some capacity in there. That I was hoping to get in lowering my rates. But this would only amount, right now, we're looking at probably, just for this project, about a 3% rate increase for that. Which is, you know, I think about $12 a year for the residents. Mr. Borg?
Mr. Borg, you signal in.
All right. Council President and Mark. As I understood it, and I may be wrong, but we're at the, leading at the front of this effort across the Commonwealth. In that we wanted to take advantage, and part of that being upfront about this was to take advantage of any potential grants and the 0% loan interest that were a part of this. So I think that plays out to our advantage because we're addressing this very early.
Right, and the other thing that was brought up, and it's a very good point, Mr. Lennox. The, the reason why they had all of our plants, because they were working on our fluoride. As soon as we got our first test results back, not even these, we told them to put the brakes on the fluoride. Because if I'm building a whole new building to house this activated carbon. The fluoride will fit right in the corner, I don't have to build a separate building for the fluoride on top of that. So that'll actually bring down the fluoride cost a great deal for this facility. But unfortunately, it's at the cost of doing all the other work that we have to do with that. So there will certainly be an economy of scale, doing both of those projects at the same time, and they will be done at the same time.
That's great to hear.
We won't really lose much of a beat on getting the fluoride on that side of the town, and that'll blend in both sides of the town. So we'll be back up in the .5, .6 range that we need to be anyway. But I, I do agree with Mr. Borg. And we've talked with the DEP and, you know, they're kind of tripping over their feet. They told me, you know, I don't need to do notification. And I told them I wanted to anyway, and now they're saying, well, you know, maybe we should do just today. They were saying, well, you know, maybe you will need to do notification. And so we have to have another conference call with them this week to figure out exactly where we are. And get something in writing on them on what they want us to do moving forward. And, you know, I think it's always in the best interest to let everybody know about it. You know, until they're sick of hearing about it, when I did the $27 million upgrade of the wastewater plant, I just beat it in everybody until they, they just knew, we're paying, we gotta go that way, we're paying for it. So I get it, I don't want to increase the ratepayers or anything. We, you know, on my capital plan, we've pulled off on a couple of projects, you know, for this year. Knowing that this is, this is coming down the pike and we'd have to lighten the load on some other things. So we'll probably push off a water main or something for a year. We're a little bit behind with COVID anyway, so I got another, I got a large project coming out this year. That'll take us through for the next year anyway on water mains.
Appreciate that input, thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Lennox, others? Weiss?
Yes. Have you looked into the Clean Waters Act program? Or the, so Water Pollution Abatement Program? There's two different ones.
Yeah, the, there's one that's generally for wastewater. Typically, that's what we've done on sewer projects under Mass Water Pollution Basement Trust. And what I meant before is the 0% financing is the state SRF program. And it may be something, I had a meeting with Adam Scanlon about something completely different the other day. And we brought up PFAS, we're talking about that, and I noted to him at the time that, because he was saying, is there anything the legislature can do? I said, you know, come May, June, you know, you guys are going to, the legislature is going to have a decision to make because I think almost every town's going to have it, and they're going to have to make the decision. Are we going to pony up the money for everybody, or is it so bad, we're not going to pony up the money for anybody? So the legislature will have to take that up at some point, because I really do think almost every community is going to have it. And you can't, there are communities, if Plainville, their well's over near me, they tested low, they're about 12 parts per trillion. If their turnpike well tests positive, that's 80% of the water that they get in town. If that, they can't turn it off if they get a positive hit in Plainville. So they're going to have to put out a notice to everybody and keep pumping. And that's what a lot of communities are going to have to be, and they're going to have to go under an administrative consent order with a timeline of how they're going to get that constructed. And how do you get it constructed? And how do you get it constructed when, you know, you have to keep that water plant going? It's, it's not going to be an easy prospect for them. Sorry to ruin everybody's evening.
Mark, what I wanted to ask was, the well that tested for the PFAs, how, how old is that well?
Well, to be clear, none of my wells were non-detected for PFAS. Every one of my wells tested, but they tested below the 20 parts per trillion, which tells you how prevalent it is in the drinking waters. But our wells range from, some of our Plainville wells, our original equipment, they're from 1906, they're hand dug, six foot wide, 30 to 40 foot deep wells, are the Plainville wells. You go over to Girl Scout Camp, Hillman Well, and Adamsdale Well, some of those are older wells that have been renewed. And the Kelly Wells were done. Some are old, some are new. So we, we've got different wells over different time periods, but it's more the aquifer than the well itself. You know, I think things, you know, you just look at the, the well that we have in the Plainville, the one closest to the road has, you know, contamination and the other ones are much lower, the ones that are further away from the roadway. So it may just be, you know, some material in tires or, you know, if there was an accident on the roadway there at some point, they sprayed with fire foam. Also, they're finding that Anvil 1010, which is used by the state of Massachusetts for spraying. They've had tests that had that come back with PFAS at 270 parts per trillion. And that's the mosquito spray that they do the overhead spraying with. So it's everywhere. I'm imagining if you test your Iced Tea, you'll probably find it in that too. But it's something, this is what they, they do. They figure out what they think a long-term level is going to be. And they put a, you know, X factor on it and they put that out and that's what we have to deal with. I'm not going to argue with the DEP over their number. They felt comfortable with that number.
Um, I just wanted to say, Serpad has done a survey of all of our wells. I would think, I think you have a copy of it, right? And if you don't, I have a copy of it. I can give it to you.
So, so you guys are aware, we, we have a redevelopment program. I spend about $100,000 a year redeveloping our wells and all of our wells get redeveloped, which means we pull the pumps, we look through the pumps. We, we do high pressure blasting of the, of the screens in the well to push out and keep those wells in healthy condition. You know, we're, we're in our wells all the time. And we do testing all the time. Like I said, the UCMR program has you testing randomly for stuff that you've never heard of. You know, when we did it in 2013, I'd never heard of PFAS. I was pretty happy we were non-detected on it, but they changed the goalposts on us. But I mean, we, we have a lot of information on our wells. We've got, you know, all the reports on them. I still have the reports from when they were built in 1906.
All right, I saw your hand earlier.
Thanks, Mr. LePointe. I know we're kind of getting late, so I have, I have questions on the reserve funds, but I'll save that for a time in the future if we're in front of finance committee, if it goes there. So I'll save those questions. Mr. Hollowell, a great presentation. I appreciate the level of detail you provided to the, to the townspeople. One question I had was just, if we do this treatment, three to $4 million, does it solve the problem forever at that well? Is there any chance it happens again?
It does. One of the conversations I had with Jim McLaughlin from DEP, he's the head of Southeast Regional Section of DEP, that they're pretty comfortable with granular activated carbon of being able to get 100% removal on it as long as you have a big enough system. You know, incidentally, it removes a lot of other things too, that, you know, a lot of people have GAC in their homes or in their filters and things like that. It's just a very robust system for removing that. So that removes it down to zero. It is typically non-detected once it goes through a working GAC filter. So that's nice.
Thank you. Thank you. Follow up, if I may, Mr. LePointe. If you don't know the answer, it's quite all right. I don't want to spend too much time on it, but do you know approximately, well, first off, you know how much it costs approximately to put a new well online from, you know, start to finish? Do we have water to do something like that in this town? What's, you know, what's our, what's our water level like, out of curiosity?
We, we actually do pretty well. We've, we've gone and I've had charts in the past that show how much water we've saved over the years. Do you want to give me a minute? I could get it or I could send it to Mr. Borg, send it to everybody. But we used to pump about 1.1 billion gallons a year. We're down between 875 to 900 million gallons a year. So that's 200 million gallons that we have. We just entered an agreement to sell some of our water to Plainville, which we've been having discussions about them about, you know, if we ain't got it to sell, it's, we've got a, you know, out clause in there that, you know, we don't sell it to them. But some of that water does come through our plant and goes back to them. In answering your question about a new well, there's two types of wells that you can put in. There's a replacement well, which we've done, and we're working on actually a replacement well for well four. That's probably the 400 to $500,000 range and takes two to three years to do on average. Plainville just fast-tracked one. They did it in about a year, costing about a half million dollars. And actually, it's a good producing well. So we're happy to have that back online coming to us. To start from scratch to do a well is probably in the three to five million range and on average takes eight to 10 years to go through the DEP process. If you want an emergency, the DEP would fast-track that, which would probably get it down to four to five years. But it is not a quick process.
Thank you very, very much. Interesting.
Just a follow up on that specific point. The well that you noted that's offline over on the Mansfield side of town. Where would that fall in that, that range? Is that a refurbishment or is that a new well?
That, that would probably be the half million dollar range for us to go. That, that might be a little bit more because, you know, it's, it's just a house right now. It doesn't have any of the, you know, all of our electronics are SCADA. You know, we basically have to go in there and gut that and put all the new guts in there and then pump it over to our treatment plant. But that might be the half million dollar range there. So like I said, if Kelly, our, our plan all along was, and again, I've only had the plan for about two weeks. So our plan was, we're going to work on Adamsdale. We had some other things we were going to try with Kelly about blending at, say, 70% versus 100%. So if I'm using 100% of the good well and 70% of the bad well, where would I hit that, that, you know, breaking point where I'm under 20 consistently? And maybe I could get, instead of a million gallons a day, I could get 600,000, 700,000 gallons a day. And that would have gotten us through at least until the Adamsdale project is over and then we can spend more time planning. If it was going to be a full-blown requirement for that well to get, for that to get built over there, we probably would have had the engineers look at that first for doing that. And it's still something we may end up doing as a future project. A lot of times these wells are built, you know, 50 years ago and that, that's probably exactly where that well was, probably built in the 50s or 60s. You know, they were using it. And once we put the treatment plant online, they looked at it and it was either too much iron and manganese, too much salt, the fact that it's right behind a firing range, or it just didn't produce enough water to make it worth their while to put the half million dollars into it at the time. So it would be something we'd revisit if we got to that point.
Okay. Good. Thank you. Any final questions, Ms. Voice? You're muted. You're muted.
Here we go.
Sorry. The, the well that's, that's closed right now, is that the one near Witch's Pond or Greenwood Lake?
The well, if I can just, oh, Mike, can I re- share the screen just for one minute? It's, it's the one over on Kelly Boulevard. I can show you right now. Again, zooming in on this well here.
Okay. So yeah, so Greenwood, Witch's Pond is near there then? Or, or did they call it the Witch Pond Field?
I'm not sure. I've never heard of Witch's Pond.
Yeah, that's the one that's, Mansfield is near there.
Oh, yeah, yeah. I'm sorry. Yeah, that's, that's a little ways away from there. But again, if you look, you know, this well right here, here's the firing range there. And we actually, at the request of the DEP, even though we didn't have to, we acquiesced. They asked us because somebody was complaining, I don't know if you recall a few years ago, somebody over on this side got like a bullet through their window and they were blaming the, they, they were suspecting that it was from the gun range. And they had gone to the DEP and said, well, isn't that dangerous? So we went and actually put test wells out there between our property and the gun range, just to see if there's any lead migrating towards us. There wasn't. But like I said, that may have contributed to why that well, it was well before my time, why that well isn't used. But you can see, it's not terribly far away from the pump house. You know, it's 425 feet away. So in theory, if we, if we wanted to put the time and money into that, that is something that we would do, that we could do.
Well, the reason why I'm bringing it up is, is because I'm reading it in the report. And one of the recommendations was to, was to protect the area where our wells are. And I just want to know if, if, if that is something that we need to do more of?
Well, we, we have. I'm trying to look for it on here. But we, we do have a water protection area around this, which four minutes after I get off this, I'll be able to find. But we do, we do have a well protection area that's defined, that, that we actually covers this area. So anybody doing a project in this area, the well protection zone, would need to come before planning board and planning board would bring it to DPW to see if we had any issues with what they were doing in that area. So we, we do limit, there was actually a cleaning company that came in several years ago up. It's a little further away, up over on Plain Street. It seems like it's far away, but it is in the river system.
Well, I know not too, I know not too long ago, there was some contamination with one of the, one of the ponds that was near Borough and Sand.
Right.
That was over there off of Plain Street. Actually, that was this, this past year, earlier this year. I'm just wondering.
I'm not sure what the contamination was, if it was.
There was a spill. There was a spill.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, generally, generally those get reported and cleaned up and they, they're required to do their own monitoring. My well is actually up here, actually Mansfield's wells are up here near Lake Merrimashie. And Plainville actually used to have a well up there, but it ended up going dry one year and the next year when it came back, it had iron and manganese. So they ended up having to shut that well down because it wasn't worth treating that well. Because it was only, I think it was only a couple hundred thousand gallons a day.
For the P, for the PFAs. So now that the, you know how it was 90 and now it's down to 20, right?
It was 90 parts per billion. Now it's 20 parts per trillion.
Okay. So, I don't know. I'm just thinking, would, what about, I know that, you know, stormwater drainage, would that, you know, leach, you know, leach into the ground and then that's how that's getting into our wells? You know, I'm just, I don't know. I'm just thinking that maybe we need to do something more to protect our drinking water supply. I think we should.
But I, I think, I, I think we're 30 years too late on, on this, you know, and you'll find that with a lot of things. I mean, everyone thought asbestos was, you know, the best thing since sliced bread for 50 years. MTBE, methyl tertiary butyl ether, you know, the Sierra Club required people to put it in their gasoline and then they found out it goes right into the drinking water. So we're always finding new, you know, drinking water is not fun anymore like it used to be. Too much regulation.
Well, well, I have to say in 190, was it 1911 or 1903?
Hold on, hold on, hold on.
North Alabamow has the best drinking water. We were always known for having the best drinking water.
We just want the small.
Quine of water, quine of water, Mr. President. We are still far off topic. Please.
But it's time to move on. Mr. Hollowell, really, really appreciate the update. Also just wanted to say thank you to you too, because I know, you know, the story kind of got ahead of the message or the message got ahead of the story a little bit last week. And appreciate you so quickly getting with the local media and getting the story out. Also, thank you to the Sun Chronicle and the Free North Star Reporter, because I thought they both did a great job of getting a really complete story out there. When, you know, I think we're maybe a little bit behind. So thank you, Mr. Hollowell. Appreciate it. I want to move on. So town-owned properties. Mr. Borg, I know the plan for tonight was to sort of give us an overview of your research and then give the council some time to digest it. So I sort of positioned it to the council that way. You probably have some questions. We're going to talk about this on the 25th. Just allow Mr. Borg and Hollowell to kind of give us the information tonight. And we'll pick the discussion up in a couple of weeks and then, like I said, refer. So, Mr. Borg, if I could turn it over to you. You're muted there, Mr. Borg.
Sooner or later, it was going to catch up with me. So this is the, the current town map that I, I've been working with Public Works, Economic Development, Planning, Conservation, Schools, a, a, a number of departments. So tonight I just wanted to introduce a topic and key up for further discussion as we go forward. And what I believe is that putting together a strategy on how best to not only manage the current properties that the town owns and has responsibility for, but how best to utilize those properties and further economic development as one of those projects. Look, the, the open space plan that's being put together by the Open Space Committee and those boards and, and those department heads that are working on that right now are really focused on the open space aspect. I mean, we've, we've got to figure out the best way to balance the properties that we have, those public lands for not only the open space value and the recreational value and the conservation of that property, but also where it makes sense for the town to look at these properties and examine and potentially sell some for development, where it makes sense. We had a great discussion last week on new growth here in town. And this is going to be one of those potential avenues that impacts and provides and feeds into the economic development of the town. This, this map, I've got some questions on it. We're still doing some work on it because I think the legend is incomplete, right? There's unassigned properties in there as well. I want to figure out what the exact status is. There's well over 300 properties when you look at it. And just let me give you a quick rundown on some of these and I can share an Excel spreadsheet with you here, but just, the landfill has responsibility for five parcels that comes to 87 acres. Conservation is charged with the responsibility of 76 parcels that come to 397 acres total. Public Works, 18 parcels with 135 acres. Fire Department, three parcels, nine acres. N A E D, they have 36 parcels for a total of 65 acres. Parks and Rec, 14 parcels at 183 acres. Schools, 13 parcels at 140 acres. And then for town, under currently under the town, and I'll, I'll break that into three categories here. One that are clearly town-owned, right? Those are nine properties for 147 acres. And then unassigned, and I'll show you those in a second, 108 for 231. Then the treasurer through tax taking actually has 31 properties for a total of 90.4. All, all of this is just kind of bringing to you the potential of what's there. I think there's a lot of considerations and a lot of coordination, collaboration that needs to go on in advance of any specific decision because there are zoning impacts. You have planning impact. You've heard from Mark tonight about impacts in regards to water supply and the location where our wells are and what activities we would potentially approve, you know, in that vicinity that might impact the aquifer. So a lot to be teed up and discussed here. Let me just show you the, quickly the spreadsheet. And hopefully it'll change out. There it is. And you can see, we maintain a fairly robust list of all these properties. Here's the conservation properties. Remember, you can, I know, I apologize for the, the fine print on here, but this just goes to show you the magnitude and the scale of this. You can see Public Works properties here, the three fire departments. You're looking at a couple of the historical there, N A E D, their property listing there in the purple, Parks and Recs here in the green, schools, properties, town and the treasurer. And then this very large of unassigned that needs and. And then this very large uh, of unassigned uh, that needs and. Requires further discussion and development. Uh, what? I propose and what I would uh, seek your support on. Is developing a strategy where appropriate, right? Uh, for these underutilized uh, properties and where they might lead in, into further. Uh, economic development. We have to be smart about what we're doing at the right property, at the right place, uh, for the right reason. Uh, and making, moving that forward. There are absolutely a number of properties on here. Uh, it's in our best interest to protect. Uh, and uh, maintain those uh. Through conservation. Uh, some of these properties come with a number of stipulations attached to them. For example, they may be in land trust that uh, we're responsible for. So, uh, with that, I, I believe uh, through further discussion. Uh, in cooperation and coordination with the Economic Development Subcommittee, i- if it's so uh. Proposed, that we would develop the strategy for looking at these potential properties uh, and developing. Uh. You know, a path forward for some options that the town might uh, undertake a- and look at. There are also a number of grant opportunities out there. That are uh, as we've seen with COVID now. Related to blighted properties or properties that uh, are underdeveloped. I know we're working at. Lyle Purney and myself discuss, at least on a weekly basis, the Crottois site, uh, and. Looking for remediation efforts to be able to uh, move that potential uh, to forward for development, uh, if there's at all possible, but there is a lot of contamination at that property and. We've got to work through it. So, so those are some of the uh. Considerations that has to be uh, taken into account. But I also believe that, and going back to. Uh. The discussions with the council at the end of summer about town goals and objectives, right? About promoting economic growth uh, in North Attleboro. This is one of the venues that we can potentially look at. And see where the opportunity for development exists. Uh, and consider the potential of. A, a sale of some property, if it makes sense, if it's for the right reasons, if it's for the right development. Uh, coming here into town. So, subject to your questions, I'll switch this back to the map.
Yes, so let's um, so Mister Borg, you'll share the, the map and the list with the council. Um. And then uh, I'm gonna limit questions right now. I just, a good, uh, and I, I don't mean to put you on the spot, Mister Gregory, but just real briefly. Uh, we'll, we'll talk about this in, in two weeks, but is there? You know, anything you, you would want to prompt uh, the council to think about in terms of input or? Anything, again, I know I'm putting you on the spot, we didn't talk about this in advance, but I just, I'll give you.
It, it's fine. There's some things that uh, uh, quickly emerging came to mind and I guess I would just uh, direct them through you to Mister Borg. Um, just some additional intel. Now, on that Excel sheet, I wasn't able to really read exactly what was on there. Um, so. There are, there are three or four things that I'm, I'm curious about. And how they impact each property that we own, the town owns. And some of that you touched upon, which is the acreage, but. Specifically, what zone is that property in and is it contaminated or not? And you might not know that because we didn't investigate, but I mean, if we do have some intel on what is contaminated. If that could all be um, also included on that spreadsheet, that'd be helpful. So then we kind of look at things which are far-reaching. Which things are more attainable, realistic, um, that we could kind of tackle in the near future and start to create some priorities that way. Um, and then also, um, which properties are in opportunity zones? Um, versus us having to go and do that research. You, you may already have that intel already. Um. Which specific properties we own are in opportunity zones and. Also, we also talked about town water and sewer. Um, also like what's running by properties that we have where there is that infrastructure set up already. Um. Just so we could have fruitful conversation and see what can be fast-tracked and what can't. Um, and, and not necessarily putting uh, redevelopment specifically on doing, you know. X to a particular property, but let's just see and leave that, that creative space for everybody to chime in on what that looks like. To happen, you know, inclusive and together with everybody, but. Let's just identify some key players that um, could be put on fast-track, because I think you can't get bogged down. With the Miramona property, but a lot of it really isn't touchable. So let's focus on what's, what we can uh, accomplish. That's basically it.
Okay, thanks, Mister Gregory. Yeah, I think there are probably decent cycles here, right? So, Mister Borg, I'm sure you, you picked up the questions there and can give as much information as possible. I think the council, maybe when we come back, let's focus the discussion just around. Sort of aspirational thinking about the, the type of stuff you'd like to see explored. Then I, you know, I think the subcommittee might have to take the time to. To, you know, rely on the manager's office, of course, to do the, the, the research and everything, but. Pull some more together and then guide the discussion a little bit. Um, I could easily see the nine of us just kind of going. Could see a really unstructured, non-productive conversation if we didn't have some. Uh, some guidance. So, let's plan on that for the next two weeks, right? Let's uh, get the information we can. If everybody can just kind of. You know, be prepared in two weeks to provide some thoughts. We'll go ahead, refer to the subcommittee and then. Let that subcommittee come back and help, help steer the conversation a little bit. Sound good? All right, good. I'm seeing us, uh, Mister Boyce, your question?
Could you um? Could, could they send us a copy of the map?
Yeah.
Email it to us.
Map, spreadsheet, Mister Borg. Good, Mister Parry?
Thanks. Uh, one other interesting get a point that would be nice, uh, it's possible would be um, assessed value of the lots.
Good. All right, well, thanks, everyone. Hey, this last topic uh, should be pretty quick. Uh, I'll just introduce it and Mister Borg, you can add on to it or not. Um, so one of the things that has become sort of obvious as we went through the email upgrade. Is a question that's been asked repeatedly over the years. In fact, it was actually proposed to the selectmen once before. About how counselors access all of the, the town's information, right? Email, data, spreadsheets. Mister Borg has an aspiration of getting us into Microsoft Teams or some sort of other collaboration site. That it's easier for us to share documents and not being town employees, I think we all sort of struggle a little bit with that. Um, there's actually an opportunity through the uh, COVID funding. Uh, to secure machines for the council. So, uh, I think uh, Mister Borg is proposing um. Some Microsoft Surface devices as the, the standard. Um, couple benefits. One, there's the obvious usage benefits for us, but I think from the town perspective, it provides more control. Over the town data and assets that we all have access to. You know, we've talked about it before, I've kind of warned everybody to do your best to avoid personal email. Because if there was ever a lawsuit or something like that, now your personal assets become searchable. Um, in, in any discovery. So, really should be using our town email for town business and. Um. But there's all the other documents. So, uh, Mister Borg and I have been talking about taking advantage of the. The opportunity we have right now with no, you know, sort of added cost to the town. To go ahead and secure those devices for the council and then ask the council to use those for uh, town business. Uh, Mister Borg, anything you would add to that?
Uh, Council President, through you, uh, just real quick, it, as we transitioned to Office three sixty-five. It became apparent that not all of the uh. Capabilities that we have available to us could be used from um, your end, but giving you a dedicated. Device uh, for town that would not be your personal property, but issued to you uh, for the duration of your uh, term. Um, then it puts everybody on the same platform, gives everybody access to the um. You know, the same systems that we have, but also uh, we can create now a shared drive. Uh, for the town council where all of your resources, all of that are now instantly accessible to you seamlessly through uh, the surface tablets. So. And, and the opportunity through CARES funding is, it's the initial outlay is at no cost to the town. Uh, it is qualifies for reimbursable expense uh, under CARES.
Okay. So I don't think we need any vote or anything, but I just wanted to put it out there for discussion. Miss Cathcart?
Hi, thanks. I just wondered, um, does this mean we all have access to like a read-only version of Munis?
Well, I have to look into that one, uh, Counselor Cathcart, to see what it is, but uh. You know, I think we should be more about where we give a- a- access to Munis to.
I would like that very much, Mister Borg.
Absolutely.
Good one. Can we add?
Well.
Oh, uh.
While I come up with it.
So, we'll, we'll keep you all posted, but other things too, you know, sometimes you've had. With these meetings with video and other things like that, so it would give the, the town some ability to facilitate that for us. I know there's some trade-offs, you know, if, if you're somebody who travels for business and you're gonna remote into a meeting, now you're carrying another device. Uh, some things like that, but I think the benefits to the town plus individually as counselors are pretty strong, so. Uh, we'll keep you posted. The town manager was gonna go ahead and uh. Work on this through the, the uh, the funding um, source and uh, yeah, we'll keep you posted. But like I said, I just wanted to. Put it on all of your collective radar tonight. Good? Any other questions on that? Good. Love the offline, if you want to just give me your feedback. I'm curious if you'd be happy about it or, or if it'd be a sacrifice on your side. Um, all right, uh, agenda. For your Lord, it's the end of it. Yes, okay, good. Uh, so. Uh, full meeting tonight, appreciate it. We've got a lot queued up for the twenty-fifth as well. Uh, that is our next meeting, Monday, the twenty-fifth. Uh, after that, we have the two meetings in February, the eighth and twenty-second, but I also know the subcommittees. Uh, that we're, we're heading into a busy time. Finance, bylaw, rules is wrapping up. Uh, economic growth is gonna get started, so uh, even though we only have a couple of meetings a month, there's a lot of work going on. That, I will take a motion to adjourn, please.
So moved.
Second.
Motion for Miss Cathcart, second for Mister Lennox. This is a roll call vote. Mister Shanahan?
Yes.
Shanahan votes yes. Miss Prescott?
Yes.
Miss Prescott votes yes. Mister Gregory?
Yes.
Gregory votes yes. Miss Boyce?
Yes.
Boyce votes yes. Mister Simmons?
Yes.
Simmons votes yes. Miss Cathcart?
Yes.
Cathcart votes yes. Mister Lennox?
Yes.
Mister Lennox votes yes. Mister Parry?
Yes.
Parry votes yes. Ikey for point vote, yes. Uh, nine zero, we are adjourned at nine forty-three PM. Uh, thank you, everyone. Have a good rest of your night, good week.
Good night.
Good night.